All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to bring the regular meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order. And I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are on the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. And especially acknowledge our relationship with the Caitlin, Quan, sorry, the Quantlin, Masque, Semiamo, and Katsi First Nations. And before I move on to the next item, I just want to pass on, Councilor Richter sensed her regrets, but her duties with the federal election have are preventing her from being here today, but she did want to pass on her regrets. So with that, I will ask for an adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please?
The move.
Councilor Davis seconds. All those in favor, pose, and that carries. Thank you. And the next item is the adoption of the regular meetings way back on the minutes of the regular meetings from July 26, 2021. Could I have a motion, please?
The move.
Second by Councilor Arnison. Any errors or missions? Call the question. All those in favor, pose and carried. Thank you. So we begin the meeting with delegations, and we have Mr. Jordan Sparrow, the President of the Township of Langley Professional Firefighters, I A F F, Local 4550, here to present to us. So welcome, and I'll make sure your microphone is on, and turn it over to you. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
All right, testing. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, sounds good. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thank you for seeing us on this, for this delegation today. As you can see, I brought some friends with me, side by side with the fire chief. As we, as we talk about a very serious, challenging issue that we feel that we're dealing with in the Township of Langley. For those that don't know me, I'm Jordan Sparrow. I'm the President of Local 4550, the Township of Langley Professional Firefighters. I represent 95 career members in both suppression and prevention divisions. I stand here before you with Fire Chief Campbell by my side. After collaboration with Fire Chief Campbell, CEO Mark Backen, HR Director Shannon Harvey Renner, the decision to discuss the issue we're about to bring up today was more of a collaborative type of decision to, to bring towards Mayor and Council. Excuse me. As you can see from the delegation topic, we are here to discuss staffing. I will start with a brief history of where we came from to where we are now. In 2006, council took the responsible step to move to a career suppression staffing model. 16 firefighters were hired to staff four platoons 24 hours a day, seven days a week. First, starting at Fire Hall number four in Willoughby. Within five years, we'd see four Fire Hall staff with 16 firefighters at each hall. 64 firefighters in total serving the Township of Langley. Each engine staffed with an officer and three firefighters. While the hiring of 16 firefighters at this time was very ambitious, it was unfortunately not enough. There was not enough staff hired to accommodate annual vacation time, sick time, or work safe absences. This resulted in the engines reducing from four firefighters to three firefighters while members were off. So WorkSafe Regulation 3123 entry into building states, four firefighters are required to make entry into any structure. I'll just read off a few of the, of the bullets within the regulation. When self-contained breathing apparatus must be used to enter a building or a similar enclosed location, there must be made, this must be made by an entry team of at least two firefighters. Effective voice communications must be maintained between the two firefighters, sorry, between the firefighters inside and on the outside of the enclosed location. During the initial fire attack stages of an incident, at least one firefighter must remain outside. We're at three. A suitably equipped rescue team of at least two firefighters must be established on scene before sending a second entry team in, not more than ten minutes after the initial attack. The rescue team required by subsection number four, which I just read, must not engage in any duties that limit their ability to make a prompt response to a rescue and endanger firefighter while interior, interior structural firefighting is being conducted. So this means that firefighters, four firefighters must be on scene within the first 10 minutes to conduct any sort of entry into a building. One being on the outside to effect rescue, the other one dedicated to running the pump on the fire truck. So it's, and it's not just environments involved fire. Any oxygen deficient environment requires this. If there are three firefighters or less, crews must wait until additional career or paid-on-call firefighters arrive, wasting precious minutes. Our industry standard is based on four firefighters. You'll notice if you talk with your colleagues in other jurisdictions, there's a commitment made to staffing their fire trucks 100% of the time with four firefighters. NFPA regulations are designed around four firefighters. So let's fast forward to 2012 through to 2014, council made the decision to hire more firefighters to address absences due to increasing vacation and statutory holiday time firefighters are entitled to as they reach years of service benchmarks. Unfortunately, this hiring initiative did not address absences due to firefighters being sick, injured, or absent due to work safe claims. With data that we collected as a, as a group here on my executive through Fire Manager, which is a roster management program that we use, we estimate that our fire trucks are safely staffed with four firefighters, only 75% on average throughout the year. So unfortunately firefighters don't wait for our engines to be, I'm sorry, unfortunately fires don't wait for our engines to be fully staffed. This creates opportunity for our firefighters to be faced with moral dilemmas. Rolling up to a fire on an engine with three firefighters, officers had to make a decision. Do we risk violating WorkSafe regulations and enter the structure to potentially save a life? Or prevent the fire from increasing in size, which in turn decreases the duration of event and decreases our exposure to harmful carcinogens? Does a firefighter make the decision to enter with three firefighters on, on this, on this truck? And risk injuring a fellow firefighter, which could potentially result in potential personal litigation? Or does the fire, does the officer make the tough decision to wait outside the structure and wait for valuable resources to show up? Harboring the what-if scenario of being able to save a life or a building if we had enough, enough staff to mitigate the situation safely? These dilemmas further add to the cumulative effects of mental health or occupational stress injuries. Like occupational cancers, these injuries are also legislated as occupational diseases presumed to be caused by the traumatic exposures while on this job. As you have read in the staffing package that I shared with you last week, a study at Johns Hopkins University shows that increased, shows an increased injury of firefighters when operating at a three-man engine company. So just briefly, staff, a fire apparatus staffed with less than four firefighters have a 36.3 higher injury rate than cities that staff apparatus with four or more firefighters. In 72% of those cases, in those cities, excuse me, injury rate was 50 more per 100 alarms compared to 35.3% in cities that maintain a minimum staffing of four firefighters. This comes down to firefighter safety. The, the ask is simple. We ask that council continue with their demonstrated commitment to safe staffing, which started back in 2012. We ask that all engines and quints be staffed with at least four firefighters 24 hours a day, seven days a week immediately. We ask that council further address staffing, staffing needs in all fire department divisions, including our prevention division, which finds itself experiencing exponential increase in demand for service as our community grows at a rapid rate. We stand here and we thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you very much for your, your presentation, and thank you for the package that we received. So I have a question from Councilor Whitmarsh.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today and, and presenting to us. This is really helpful information. And to provide, oops, the package that you sent us as well. I just had a couple of questions to help clarify things. I, I noticed in here, I think it's in section three of the book, the book that you talk about overtime costs, overtime costs across the, across the department. And I'm wondering if you would have any sense of how much of, of the overtime cost is due to trying to get to four firefighters at, per shift or per truck that you would call it? Is that, is, is the overtime being used to try and get to that four, or is that the overtime for something else?
So the, the document we shared with you is an Excel spreadsheet. The overtime that we're referring to in there is an estimation of what it would have cost if we had utilized a staffing model of four firefighters, no matter what. So the absences in there, they ebb and flow from year to year based on the amount of times that we have members off with workplace injuries, long-term disability, sick, and then absences due to the annual vacation. Those numbers that we have derived out of here, such as if we look at 2021, that's an estimation of $517,000 in overtime costs in order to maintain our staffing. And you'll, you'll see at the, the last, the last column there, on average, we are short about 3.93 firefighters based on our absences. So let's keep in mind, though, that many of these absences are work safe related absences. Individuals that have been injured on doing this job have created an absence, and our staffing suffers because of it. The other absences are due to sick. We're human. We do get sick. We do have absences, but that now comes at a cost to, to our members for, for safety and as well as the service model that we can provide the public.
Right. Okay. So are you, in, in your, and when you were presenting to us, you talked about the, so you gave us a brief history. Said that in 2006, we moved to 64 career firefighters. But that model did not account for sickness or vacation or other kinds of absences. In 2012, it, to 2014, there were more firefighters hired to now cover holidays. So is that, has that been a regular part of the model that we now do? We do cover for holidays, or we have enough firefighters to cover for holidays in the model that we're using? Is that what I'm?
Without giving the, the exact details, maybe the fire chief has those numbers specifically. But as our, as our members accrue more years of service, they do qualify for more vacation, vacation time. Our staffing model doesn't keep up with those increased absences. So we don't hire firefighters based on, okay, in two years, this X amount of firefighters will be getting an extra four days of vacation time. We, we, we make do with reducing our numbers to three sometimes. As you'll note that even this year, we just, now, this is unfair to, to put on any department or on the, on the corporation, but it's, it's an example where we've experienced an additional day off for a statutory holiday that was deemed federal and that's come down to the civic level. We don't have staff to main, to, to, to put on trucks or a model to bring staff in while those individuals take that vacation day.
Right. Okay. So so I, I guess the, I'll ask a final question. I know others have questions as well, but the, I think I heard you say that we're 3.93, so let's say four firefighters short. Is that four firefighters short across the entire township to get to four, for, to have four at all time?
That's an average based on the, the statistics that we were able to come up with based on a roster management program that we have. It's probably not as ideal as the hard data. The fire chief has hard data. We don't have access to that. This is just a pure estimation based on four shifts out of four fire halls, which are our career staffed halls. On average, we are down four firefighters by July of this year. Last year it was, it was higher because of COVID. We had numerous members off due to contracting COVID while on the job, and that number increased. That number would probably wouldn't, would have been as high this year if we hadn't brought on more recruit firefighters who have just subsequently filled retirement spots. So we didn't add any staff. We were just replacing staff that had been vacant for a certain period of time.
Right. Okay. So maybe this, the chief can answer this better. I'm not sure, but you indicated that 75% of the time we have four firefighters per shift, which then would tell me that 25% of the time we don't. And yet it seems that four firefighters wouldn't be enough to cover 25% gap.
That number will change as it goes throughout the year. If you notice in the column N as in November, it references the average vacancy or the average that we are three firefighter across the board. 21% this year so far. Last year was 28%, 17% this year, 16% the year before, as high, as high as 35% down in 2015. Again, we're, we're taking the average of the years. We're not necessarily focusing on this year specifically. We just wanted to show you some rough numbers as to what we're looking at for vacancy. In terms of a three, a three firefighter engine versus a four. I'll tell you right now that today, engine six in, in Murrayville is a three firefighter engine. Next week, I think there, out of the four engines, three of them are three firefighter engines.
Right. Okay. How, how many firefighters do you currently have?
We have 95, 95 total, and we're sitting in about 89 suppression, I believe.
Right. And that, that, well, that's career firefighters.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just a note to council as we're transitioning to this hybrid version, if you want to get on the speaking list, if you could, the members of council that are in the chambers, just use your raise hand, because I'm trying to, I have two lists here. So no, the raise hand on the electronically. If you go to the reactions, there's the raise hand. So if you it's not going, try clicking it again. Just, just click it once. No, no, go back to it. Click on, right there, right on that one. Okay, now you're on. Yeah, you're there. Oh, you clapped. First one was clapping. The bottom one is, is a raise hand. So, okay. So that just helps me maintain, maintain the list. So it's transition. I know we're transitioning. We're, we're doing a hybrid right now of two different systems. So I apologize for the interruption. Councilor Ferguson.
Thank you for coming, Jordan Captain Sparrow. Hopefully you're not with the Pirates of the Caribbean. I did want to say that going back historically, I know that Councilor Long was here and Councilor Richter, as well as myself, former counselor in the audience, Fox, and then of course Mayor Alberts when he went in that 2006 when that decision was made. Now, what I wanted to ask you, I got a couple of questions, and Councilor Whitmarsh asked an awful lot of the, some of the questions I had, but not all, is that things were different from WorkSafe's point of view, I guess, 2006 and currently. And I, my first question, I guess, that meant you were able to proceed with the three men at the time and work it accordingly. Was that correct?
Not the way I understand it, no.
Okay, what's your understanding?
That the regulation is as it reads right now.
Now, how about 2006? What was the regulation? Because we were just coming into effect.
I believe it's the same there. I've had some good, very good discussions with the fire chief, and I think he's been very open with, with Mayor and Council as well. That when you staff a fire hall, it's not 16. There is a, there is a staffing relief factor that's built into staffing a fire hall. And he's probably better to speak on it than I am in terms of what exactly that number is. 16 may result into 21 to 22 and a half firefighters. I'm not sure what the exact number is. But that's just a, a general, a general number that, that is utilized amongst the industry. Now, there is a staffing relief factor that can be, that can be taken into account based on historical data that we have. We were able to access upwards of, of seven to eight years of it. That will give you data that you can, you can punch into a, into a formula, and it'll give you specific staffing relief factor for your historical absence.
Okay. Anyway, there's two chiefs since Chief Campbell as well. So I mean, I can't comment at the time, and we are beginning a new process for a township.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, that's called, my next question is, due to geographical, as a page 14 or 35, depending on which one you're looking at, due to geographical isolations of Fire Hall three and the distance between currently staffed Fire Halls six and eight, the department would not be able to assemble NFPA low alarm standards. Can you comment on something about 17 personnel within eight minutes?
Yeah. So what you're reading there is a GIS study that we had, the International Association of Firefighters, GIS team produced for the Township of Langley. And what that is, is that's just comparing NFPA standard 1710, which is applied to urban-style fire departments such as an area like Willoughby. Certain parts of Murrayville, certain parts of, of other communities follow 1710 versus 1720, which is considered more rural. The International Association of Firefighters doesn't really deal with 1720. So they based their analysis on 1710. And what they're saying in there is that based on geographical location, we don't meet the standard for NFPA with regard to arrival on scene within a certain timeframe. We're not using that as a, hey, listen, we need to build fire halls, more fire halls and build them closer. The, what we're looking for is just to going, just to, just to ensure that we've got the best effort possible, and that's by having four guys on that truck. This comes down to firefighter safety all day long.
Okay. And my last question, I know others, council members who want to ask some question is, again, page 1536, depending on what you're looking at, the proposed emergency response capabilities, okay? And you're looking at a new fire hall near the intersection of 72nd and 232nd, open two new fire halls, one near 72nd, 232nd, 88th and 200th, and add an engine to Fire Hall five. Now, is this, you did these recommendations based on working with the chief, Shannon Harvey Winner and the administrator Mark Backen?
What we did with this was, again, this is data that, we only got this data put together based on fire hall locations. We don't have access to the CAD data as to where the calls actually come in. The fire chief owns that data. So the purpose of this is actually to support the fire chief in, in where he wants to put fire halls. So as you all know, he's made a presentation to you to, to have a fire hall proposed at 232 and Highway one. The data supports that. The data also is built on projected growth within the Township of Langley, as you read early in that document. It points out that Willoughby is obviously our hotspot and in, in terms of growth. And that the, the burden placed on one fire engine out of Willoughby with three firefighters is, is unreal. And actually, based on NFPA recommendations, there should be a second fire hall within close proximity, proximity to that fire hall based on the population in the area and, and the type of demographic and the industry that's in there. Density of housing also plays into factor. Road networking plays a factor. This was done for us. It was separate from what the fire chief puts together for his master plan and for his accreditation. But I feel, I feel the document supports it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Kind of very good information. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you. Councilor Arnison.
Waiting for the light to turn on. You can't see. There's a little red light. I just have to say how wonderful it is to see an audience. This is the first time since a year and a half, we've actually been in the same room with people. So thank you very much for coming today. So we're sore, if we seem a little skittish, it might just be because we're kind of not used to that anymore. So thank you very much for coming. I want to thank you very much for your presentation today and all this material that you've put together, which is very helpful. Because, you know, in terms of a governance model, when we look at what the needs are at a given budget year, it's not necessarily that kind of fine-tuned focus that we have. So, you know, further to that, as you've alluded to, the township is growing very quickly, and you were talking about Willoughby. One of my questions was about that. So two things. So first of all, a baseline complement is necessary. I understand that, and that is the goal that we need to achieve, and that's something we should be talking about always at the budget. But in terms of prospectively looking forward, I have had some concerns about the nature of the exponential development in high rises that we're going to have in the township. And so I'm wondering, just to try and get ahead of that, if you have done any assessment about what that looks like in terms of the need? Because I'm the type of person that likes to project into the future rather than trying to play catch-up. So I just wondered if you had any guesstimate about what that would look like in terms of firefighting complement?
Yeah, it would be a guesstimate and be completely anecdotal from, coming from me. But in terms of what our, we know that our neighbors deal with, with their responses to high-rise buildings, we're falling quite short. High-rise building fires are a whole different animal, that I'll be honest with you, would be brand-new training for this, this group of firefighters. One that we have had preliminary conversations with the fire chief about training with regard to high-rise. But we haven't been able to, to get to specifics on, on manpower required to deal with such incidents only because we're focused on actually just getting one extra firefighter in our, in our trucks right now. Those are conversations that, that we know the fire chief is open to. And, and we know that those high-rise buildings are on the horizon, and now's the time to start rather than reacting to, to the, the new residences and new buildings that we have would be prudent for sure.
Yes, because I imagine that the timeline for training and getting recruits and getting everybody organized and equipment and it, you know, that must be at least a couple of years, I, I would just generally assume. And so it seems to be prudent for us to be starting to consider that, to get those two components in sync more with each other.
Oh, absolutely. And as, as these buildings get taller, the, the call for service gets more important. If we're talking high-rise, first thing that comes to our minds is high-angle rescue. And right now, if we have a high-angle rescue in the Township of Langley, if it's below 75 feet, we can make an effort at it through a modified program that we use called Quint is the High Point. Anything above that, we're going to have to call somebody else, and they're going to have to provide that service for us.
I, I know it's not really related to this, but I think it's important to consider. I know that in certain instances, if there's an emergency, there's a call out to a lot of different districts, you know, if there's a, a huge fire that needs to have more manpower. Is that something that you consider to be relatively reasonable under certain circumstances? I'm not saying it should supplant the number of people that you legitimately need at all times, but that's something that's an ongoing consideration for some of the incidents that we have.
Well, it is. And, and again, I'll refer back to NFPA. NFPA has a recommendation on how many firefighters should show up to various types of fires versus, you know, a, a single-family Roman contents fire, a multi-residential fire, a high-risk hazardous materials type occupancy type of fire. They're all built in there. At our, at our worst, we have the ability to, to, to bring on 14 firefighters to a scene immediately. On top of that, we do have a, we are supported by our paid-call firefighters. The model works for the most part, but there's not a guarantee. I mean, you can ask the fire chief if he can, if he can draw up data on how many times we've, we've had calls go out and not, not been answered by our busy paid-on-call staff. You know, they're working professionals. They're not always around. So again, if we are reducing our numbers on the trucks to three, we're really doing ourselves a disservice. We cannot provide as much as we can based on industry standard. So as we move forward and, and, and our, and our call volume continues to increase and our occupancies become more hazardous and higher, I, I think it's inevitable that we're going to have to bring on more staff in order to accommodate it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I certainly know that you've had a very busy, in particular, summer and, you know, throughout the year because of COVID and other things. So really appreciate your service and coming today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Woodward.
Make sure everybody can hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Good. All right. Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Captain Sparrow, for coming forward. Did I have one question, though? You, you mentioned, or sort of in the, in the written and in the presentation, this has been an issue for some time.
It is.
So I just wanted to ask why? So I just wanted to ask why? Why has it not come forward sooner?
Well, I'll be honest, I took the helm in January, and it was my first priority to deal with this issue that we've been talking about for a long time within the fire department. We're a collaborative group. We're a group that wants to to work together in order to accomplish a common goal. When I say a common goal, I know the fire chief echoes what I'm saying because we've had the conversation. He he agrees. He wants he wants the staff on the trucks. How do we get there? At the end of the day, firefighter safety is number one for me. I'm accomplishing my number-one initiative as president of the local. And 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 I decided to to bring this this to a head in in a more formal fashion. And I included the fire chief from a collaborative approach, excuse me, Mark Backen and Shannon Harvey Renner. I thought it was appropriate. And if we were able to accomplish that, you know, within the within the confines of those meetings, that was my goal, which would have been great. I know that their hands are tied in some areas and 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 the need is to, you know, approach mayor and council for for the final push to see this through.
Yeah, so your follow-up on that is just, you know, why you think maybe we haven't seen this request come forward through the budget process in in this council term?
Again, I'm the president of a of a of a union. I don't participate in buzzet proposals. Better answered by the fire chief.
Okay, and then, yeah, in the second fire hall in Willoughby, you mentioned that, what location did you mention again? I want to make sure I had that corrected in my notes.
Again, I I wouldn't focus on necessarily that information, that is pie in the sky, thirty-thousand-foot view. Then it was made mention around the Eighty-eighth and Two Hundred Street corridor, where a lot of our density is increasing. So again, thirty-thousand-foot view on that one. I I want to bring things back to firefighter safety. And before we even start talk about hiring more fire halls and staffing more more trucks, I want to make sure that the ones that we currently have are appropriately staffed on a regular basis.
Okay, I certainly, you know, I certainly see the logic to that and appreciate that. I certainly appreciate you raising the need for the long term, a second hire fire hall in Willoughby. And it's certainly been interesting seeing council support for that this term. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kunst. Oh, give me a second. You're on.
Okay. Yes, thanks for coming forward and putting this presentation together. So I have a few questions. Some of them have already been answered, but I'll just ask them in the way that I'm need to ask them. It mentions here that in two thousand and six, there were a hundred full-time staff that were hired. And now we're down to ninety. Is there a reason why we haven't at least maintained the the one hundred?
Well, the, well, two thousand and six, we started the process of hiring. We've, we started with sixteen, we moved to thirty-two, upwards of forty-eight, then up to sixty-four. And since then, we've exponentially grown staff. I'm not sure which information you were speaking to when it comes to the hundred versus where we are now.
I I just, it it seems like as I was reading it, that we haven't actually even maintained the staff that that we we've hired that.
No, there may have been a reference in our in our prevention staffing, our prevention component of the of the package, excuse me, where they have seen a regression in their in their total complement of of people working in this in the in the prevention division. So maybe.
So is there a reason why we haven't sort of maintained those staffing levels? Is there, I mean, and I guess it goes to the the staffing model. So if there's a staffing model that's not working, I mean, I I think what I'm getting from all this is that, I mean, you shouldn't really have to come to council and say, hey, we we need to have more staff on our trucks. We need to keep our guys safe. Like, this should be something that just kind of should happen without you having to, you know, advocate so strongly because this is about safety and this is about our community. So like, I guess that's, at the end of the day, what you're really wanting is the staffing model that, you know, that works. And is there a community that has one that we could?
I think many communities do, again, you know, without being prepared specifically for that question. It would be inappropriate for me to speak on behalf of another city. But in talks with colleagues, I do know that other departments, they do have plans that are put in place to make sure they're hiring staff as retirements happen, as 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 holidays increase, vacation time increases, and the and the flow of of annual absences through a relief staffing factor. Again, it would be unfair for me to speak on their behalf. I do know they're out there. We would love to see a a model put in place that projects those absences and those vacancies so that we can get ahead of them before we experience gaps. We've had our gaps, make no mistake, and we've solved some of those just recently, and they are having a positive impact. But some of them have taken way too long.
In your report, you mentioned a staff rescue. Can you explain what a staff rescue is to?
So we have a staff rescue truck in the in the township at Fire Hall Number Six. Fire Hall Number Six has two pieces that run out of that hall, which is a, on a great day, a four-man engine and a two-man rescue. And the rescue is comprised of one firefighter and either a district chief or a platoon captain. They are the same role. One happens to be a unionized platoon captain. And through attrition, that's what all of our our leaders on that truck are going to be. And those individuals deliver specialized equipment to our most serious calls. They 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 are part of training out of amongst all of our four halls. They deliver, sometimes they're delivering goods to each fire hall, such as toiletries and and supplies. So it it serves a function, a very important function. And I believe in the proposal that the fire chief has put forward for Two Three Two and Highway One, that he's looking to put another two-piece hall there because of the increased demand for service. And having a rescue truck with all those resources on the north side and the south side of the freeway, it's good risk management. We agree with him.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you again for coming forward and sharing your concerns.
Thank you. Counselor Long.
Yeah, thank you very much, Captain Sparrow. It's a great presentation and lots of reading material that I've been poring over. But interestingly, you used your sort of your own delegation request. I think our regular delegation request has somewhere along it, what is the outcome of what is the desired outcome of the delegate? So so maybe as as maybe we're concluding the your presentation, what is the ask that you're you're bringing to council? That I know you've informed us on a lot of things. You do mention that your purpose is to work collaboratively with us, and I appreciate that that's happening. But maybe you could just give me a summary of the actual ask?
Yeah, no problem. I'll just reiterate, it's twofold. It's continued commitment by mayor and council to safe staffing levels on our fire apparatus, to keeping our firefighters safe, which is four firefighters on our engines and quints one hundred percent of the time. Second being that we are focusing on future needs within all of our divisions to make sure that we're keeping up with the demand based on the growth of this community.
Great. So it's really, that's a financial, it's a financial ask, really, because?
It's a firefighter safety ask.
Certainly it is. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further questions. I want to thank you for your presentation. And I think since two thousand and six, you've seen council has been supportive of of the full-time fire department and growing it and as it grows and staffing it. I know through through my career here, we've added, we've listened to this before and added more personnel to assist. And certainly, it is a safety issue. We we totally get it. It's also a financial issue. Always has to go through budget. And and, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the collaborative spirit that you have in working with the chief and our senior staff.
Absolutely.
And and working together to bring this to council because we're we're here as a team. So I know later on, as our other business, and I would, I would hope that we'd have a motion to refer this to the budget so that further work can be done and be brought and and that can be brought to to council. Because I know it's safety, but it always boils down to the budget, and we do have to, that's our process. And I think you're aware of that. And again, I appreciate your collaborative spirit and all of and everyone for attending today. It's it's great to see everyone. As Counselor Anderson said, it's been so long. We've been sitting here and looking at screens and open and empty rooms. And I hope this is the beginning of getting back to normal. But again, I appreciate the support that you have from your members and that they're showing council the support that they have for council. So thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, mayor and council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Worship, point of order?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so so normally, our procedure is that at other business, we can refer delegations to staff or or request some action on delegation. But seeing how we have a, you know, the the chambers is full of firefighters, would it be appropriate that that motion could come now?
I I think we could do that, you know, in light of the fact that, you know, with this pandemic, it may be that they would like to might like to leave if we deal with it now. So I will, if there's any, if there's no opposition from council, we can take that as just a change in our agenda, unless someone wishes to take it to a motion.
Yeah, well, then then I'd like to move that we refer this to staff. We should hear from the chief. Not a good reference, the the chief having information that the the union doesn't have. So let's get the ball rolling and the more information.
I think a motion to refer to staff into the budget, so both, so we know we've covered it all. So it's been moved by Counselor Long, second by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on that? I see none. Call the question, decision of hands. All those in favor? And anyone opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. I I hope that was the outcome you wish, but that's the process we have to follow. And and you're welcome to stay, but I know if you have other things to do, you're, we also understand that you want to go. We'll send a copy of the mayor's report to everybody. All right, well, thanks a lot. Thanks. Thanks, Counselor Long, for that. Let's give a minute for to to leave. All right, we now move on to presentations, and we have three presentations. Two are from Metro Vancouver, and the third is the from TransLink. The first one is the Metro Twenty-Fifty Plan, which is out for coming up for consultation. I'm really happy to see Mr. Dobrevolny here with staff. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Dobrevolny, and he can introduce the staff, and I'll turn it over to you. Thank you very much for for attending.
Great. Well, well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to present Metro Twenty-Fifty, the draft update to the regional growth strategy. My name is Jerry Dobrevolny. I'm the Commissioner and Chief Administrative Officer of Metro Vancouver. I respectfully acknowledge that Metro Vancouver residents live, work, and learn on the shared territories of many indigenous peoples, including the ten local First Nations, Ketsi, Kwantlin, Kwekutlum, Matsqui, Musquiam, Kakite, Semiamu, Squamish, Tawasun, and Slavoteth. We're blessed to live in a region that is as beautiful as it is abundant. As a region, we enjoy healthy ecosystems, a vibrant local economy, and strong and resilient communities. And we all contribute to making this region strong. Some communities are home to our drinking water reservoirs. Some communities host our industrial lands of business districts. Other communities support the bulk of our agricultural lands and the food security they represent. And all of our communities are also great places to go home. Each individual member is helping to make the region successful. None of this is by accident. We have all benefited from the thoughtful and sometimes difficult choices made by those local government leaders who came before us. They've made wise, long-ranging planning decisions like protecting critical conservation areas, preserving agricultural land, and investing in public transit, while cities across North America were building highways. Their foresight and their regional plans helped to set us up for success. Now it's our turn to make those thoughtful decisions about how our region will change over time. Our challenges are many: a limited land base, high housing prices, and rapid population growth. We know we must do better in terms of helping all people in our region thrive, regardless of age, income, or background. And climate change is undoubtedly the greatest challenge of our time. This is not a time to go it alone. More and more, we recognize that individual cities and towns are not equipped to face the twenty-first century challenges on their own. Now, more than ever, this is a time for cooperation, cohesion, and more importantly, for dialogue. And that's what Metro Twenty-Fifty represents to me: our commitment to keep talking, to work alongside each other to find solutions to these challenges and to take advantage of the opportunities in our path, to learn together and to revise our plan periodically so it stays current and ambitious. I just wanted to mention that over the next three months, we'll be visiting each member jurisdiction with this presentation. We're very pleased to be here, albeit virtually, in the Township of Langley today. Part of the reason we're here today is to emphasize to you how important this eighty-page plan is to everything else we do at Metro Vancouver. How we plan for projected growth and land use in the region has a massive impact, for better or for worse, on our other responsibilities as local governments, including the regional utilities and services provided by Metro Vancouver. If we choose a sprawling development pattern, we also choose to spend more down the road on expanding and maintaining inefficient infrastructure and inefficient transportation and transit systems. Simply put, if we spread the population too thin, it has major budget implications. We end up with miles of pipes and roads that are much more expensive to maintain. And those aren't the only costs that we have to think about. In addition to the impacts of sprawl, unaffordability, and equity issues, there are health impacts of time spent in traffic from poor air quality due to commissions, emissions. Choosing compact, complete communities, on the other hand, means greater efficiencies and protecting things we value, like our industrial capacity, our sensitive natural areas, and our food-producing lands. And it will mean reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. That compact development pattern also has important resilience benefits. And these past two years have highlighted the importance of planning for a resilient region. For an example, the challenge of COVID-nineteen has taught us the value, the essential value of protecting our conservation and recreation lands and making sure that we expand our parkland to meet growing popularity of parks and trails. And our experience this summer with this extreme heat, drought, and rampant wildfire demonstrate that climate action and planning for resilience cannot be delayed, which is why we're committed to achieving carbon neutrality by twenty-fifty and building communities that are more resilient to natural hazards and to extreme weather. These are the principles that you will see shine through on every page of Metro Twenty-Fifty, the update to the regional growth strategy. I also want to extend my gratitude to you and your staff for the comments and input that's been provided thus far. They are important contributions to the drafting of Metro Twenty-Fifty. I know as you look through this document, you'll see that it reflects the issues that you've raised and the solutions that you've proposed. This is your plan, and we cannot get it over the finish line without your help. I know Heather and her team really value your participation and engagement because because it helps to make the final product better. We're listening, and we want to hear your input on the draft presented to you today because together, we make our region strong. And now I pass you over to Heather and her team to walk you through this afternoon's presentation. Thank you. Heather?
Thank you so much, Jerry, and thank you, your worship and council. Can I share my screen from here? Is that the? Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you. Perfect. I think we can turn this into a presentation mode. There we are. So the objective of what we're going to cover this morning really is about setting the Township of Langley up to provide comments on the draft. So my objective today is to start by providing a quick introduction to regional growth strategies and our long history of visionary regional planning as a federation of local governments, to tell you a little bit about the scope of the update to the regional growth strategy, go over the main elements, and then next steps in terms of opportunities for you to provide your comments this fall. So a regional growth strategy is a long-range policy plan that covers any issue that the regional federation together agrees needs to, needs a regional approach. The the requirements for it are laid out in the Local Government Act. And essentially, all official community plans across the region need to be showing alignment with the regional growth strategy to demonstrate how we're working together for a more sustainable future. We have a long and very proud history of regional planning in this region dating back decades, as you can see on this slide. And our current regional growth strategy, which I'm sure you're familiar with, is Metro Twenty-Forty, and it was signed on to by all affected local governments in two thousand and eleven. Metro Twenty-Forty has served the region really well, and the township has been a a great partner in this. That's why our board, in terms of the scope of this update, has directed us to make sure that we're building on the successes of the existing plan. So much of the content in Metro Twenty-Forty is being ported directly into Metro Twenty-Fifty. But that being said, the board has also given a strong direction to align with Transport Twenty-Fifty, the new regional transportation strategy, which you're also hearing about today. But it has also said that we need to learn from the ten years of implementation and respond to some of the critical challenges that Jerry talked about that are facing this region, such as climate change, housing affordability, and social equity. The process to update the regional growth strategy began about two and a half years ago and includes a robust engagement program that we carried out despite some of the challenges. that we carried out despite some of the challenges that have been posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. Member jurisdictions have been the key audience for this engagement, both at the elected official level but also at the staff level, to make sure that the update that you see reflects your community's aspirations, priorities, and perspectives. You can see some of the activities that we've undertaken over the past couple of years: four public dialogues hosted in partnership with our member jurisdictions across the region, a webinar, and a lot of input via a public feedback form. We conducted 11 themed policy reviews reflecting the different themes of the growth strategy, so thinking about housing, transportation, climate action, et cetera. And we worked closely with your staff and other subject matter experts across the region to, A, explore what was working well in Metro 2040, B, look for gaps, and C, look at policy opportunities to improve how this plan supports local planning and our common planning objectives. We also struck a Metro 2050 Intergovernmental Advisory Committee made up of member jurisdiction staff, so your staff, local First Nations, the province, TransLink, and other stakeholders, to help us develop the content for Metro 2050 and review it on a goal-by-goal basis. The draft of Metro 2050 was presented to the board for referral out for comment in June of this year. Copies were then sent out to all of our members, and we're asking for comments by November 26 of this year. What you will see is that the changes that are in this plan are reflective of requests that came from member municipalities, TransLink, and others. And you will also see that there continue to be actions for Metro Vancouver, for members, and for TransLink to really show how local and regional plans, both in land use and transportation, work together towards a common and desired future. Regional projections for population, housing, and employment growth are an important component of the regional growth strategy and one of our core services in regional planning. We provide that service to members, to TransLink, to utilities and others to assist in your capital infrastructure and community planning. But I do want to emphasize that these are projections, not targets. The intent is to provide information and guidance to planners, engineers, and you as decision-makers across the region on what growth we think you can anticipate coming to you based on past trends but also a set of assumptions about the future. As you can see with the numbers, we are a growing region, and we expect that to continue. We expect to add about 35,000 people a year to this region. As context, that's the population of Port Moody joining our region each year. And that means when we add another million people by 2050, we also have to make sure we have sufficient housing and jobs to accommodate that growth. The numbers you see in Metro 2050 have been ground-truthed and tested with your staff to make sure they fit with your local population forecasts, planned capacity, and assumptions around growth. So here are the five goals in Metro 2050 currently, and they really reflect longstanding regional planning principles that ensure that we, as a federation, can accommodate growth that we're expecting in a way that protects all that we value, whether that's about protecting important lands, like our ecologically important lands, our food lands, our job lands, ensuring that we're creating a region of diverse and complete communities, a strong and resilient economy, and of course, the efficient provision of urban infrastructure. And what I mean by that is water, sewer, and transit. So while the majority of content in Metro 2050 has been carried forward from Metro 2040, there are some improvements that I just want to mention very briefly today. So first of all, what we heard from our members is a desire for greater clarity on the growth expectations around urban centers and our transit corridors. And we worked with your staff to develop some ideas on how to provide that clarity. And that really results in a stronger alignment of planned locations for growth with transit investment. And we're doing that through a new tool called Major Transit Growth Corridors. One of the things our members have told us is that a great role for Metro Vancouver and the regional growth strategy is to set aspirational targets that we can work together towards. And so one of those, you'll see, is a new target in the plan that 15% of new and redeveloped housing in urban centers and along transit corridors would be affordable rental housing. There are also a whole host of new policies focused around tackling housing challenges in our region: policies to encourage transit-oriented affordable housing, increase housing stock in general, and protect non-market rental units. There's also stronger protection for our job lands, industrial lands, particularly those along the Goods Movement Network, but also some flexibility for affordable rental near-rapid transit stations. The climate imperative is also seen in the plan. You can see collaborative actions for us all to work towards greenhouse gas emission reduction targets and prepare for some of the inevitable challenges that are facing us from climate change. Two targets around the environment: one is to protect 50% of land for nature in the region. We're at about 42% right now. And also achieve 40% of tree canopy cover within the urban containment boundary. We're at about 32% right now. The board has also challenged us to think about the policy outputs. So who is affected by the different policies that we have in the plan? And how does that impact different segments of our population? And also to really emphasize on building relationships with First Nations and incorporating their development and planning needs into the plan. And I just would note that the targets that are here really are recognized to be regional targets. So nobody has... No single member has to achieve this alone. Really, each member works within your own local context and contributes towards that regional target. So I just want to highlight a couple of things from the township of Langley. And this particular tool that I just mentioned is the Major Transit Growth Corridors. These are shown in blue on the map on the screen right now. These are areas of potential density and growth. And Carvolf, for example, is an example of an existing frequent transit development area. But these blue areas represent locations where future FTDAs or frequent transit development areas are possible, if the township so chooses. They correspond with the TransLink-proposed Major Transit Network, which is shown in yellow here, and you'll hear more about later. These areas were developed in partnership with local government staff, and your staff advocated for the inclusion of 200th Street between Langley Regional City Centre and Carvolf. These corridors help us integrate planning for growth and planning for transit investment and are a key linchpin between the regional growth strategy and the regional transportation strategy. And they're also just a great example of how iterative collaboration between local and regional planning can help us crystallize together a vision for how the region will evolve over time. As Jerry noted, we really want you to see this as your plan. The draft was prepared based on municipal input and guidance, including what you and your staff have told us is important in your community. And now we're really anxious to hear what you think. Their five-month comment period is happening in advance of any bylaw readings. And that's intentional because it allows us time for change and dialogue and input in advance of any bylaw readings. So we're hoping you will provide comments via council resolution by November 26. But there are also opportunities for residents, businesses, nonprofits, and others to provide comments using a public-facing feedback form on our website. You'll see we have a number of engagement opportunities happening this fall, including an upcoming webinar, if you're interested in hearing more about the content in the plan. And here's the timeline, just in terms of next steps to wrap up. Once that comment period ends in November... This is a really critical time. Our board has asked us to assess what kind of alignment do we have across local governments and members in the region. Right now, they're asking us to complete this update within this local election cycle, so by June or July of next year. And of course, the challenge is if there's not great alignment at the end of the comment period, we need to reassess whether that ambitious timeline is still feasible. So we want to thank you again for inviting us to present, and thank you again to your staff, who have extensively contributed their time, their energy, and expertise in shaping and reviewing the draft that's in front of you today. And it is the result of 24 months of engagement with your staff, with councils across the region, First Nations, policy experts, TransLink, member the public, and many others. And we thank you for your input and collaboration. And we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. McNeil. It seems like just yesterday, Councillor Fox, who was the then-director for the Township of Langley at Metro Vancouver, sat here and he waved the Metro 2040 Plan around and says, "We got it signed. It's moving ahead." And that was just before I got elected. So it seems to be just, you know, a short time ago. And here we are, looking at Metro 2050. So it's a lot of work has been done under the Metro 2040 and certainly carrying on that work into the future and taking what we've started in Metro 2040, moving into Metro 2050, I think is extremely good. And yet, we can continue to improve it. So a lot of work's gone into this so far, and it looks like there's still a lot of work to go. But I do appreciate your presentation to bring it to our attention. I've got some questions or comments from council. I'll start with Councillor Ferguson.
Director Dobrevony and Manager McNeil. You know, it seems that must be that blended water we're sending from the township of Langley because every time I see you guys on Zoom, you look younger. But I did want to say it's an excellent presentation, and it's a lot of food for thought here. I mean, let's face it, as you look at all the infrastructure costs, we're not getting any more land in the region. So the cost of land, the cost of services, construction, everything goes up. So the one thing you'll always have to keep your eye on, and you'll comment in a minute. I'll ask one question, and then I'll let others, is your finances regarding anything from your water, your liquid waste, your drainage, and the other things, of course, the planning principles. And I guess also my comment regarding financing and goals. You know, you're asking what regions can do, participants, member participants within the region, what they can do. Perhaps there are some things some districts or some communities can do, like Langley Township, and others count. Like, for example, we have an international border that's only open, you know, I guess 18 hours. It's not open 24 hours. So we'd like it to be open maybe 24 hours. So it's an opportunity in the future, and that would help the region. We have an opportunity for maybe more industrial use and agricultural uses. And there's other things, park space. So there's some things that we can do where, you know, we couldn't probably put a professional hockey team, or at least we do have a semi-professional with the Giants, but a large stadium or something regarding the professional football or something. But anyway, there's something, and those are the things that kind of... I would look. Of course, our council would have it as well. So the finance question is the one I wanted to throw at you, if you wanted to comment.
Thank you very much for the question through the chair. You know, we've heard loud and clearly from all the members concerns about costs and budgets. And we know that at the local government level, we're all struggling with budgets. We have taken a number of actions. The board gave us direction to look at short-term savings as a minimum. And so, you know, our last year and this year are increases, you know, are expected to be much lower than what was originally projected. What's driving our costs, or not operating, our operating costs for the last many years, we've kept at or below inflation, it's capital costs. We're building very large capital infrastructure. And so we're upgrading our sewage treatment plants from primary plants to tertiary, which is very important to improve water quality for salmon and southern resident killer whales. And also because of growth, adding the Northwest Langley Treatment Plant, because of growth we're seeing, and also with water. And so it's really important that we look to have growth pay for growth, which is why we're reviewing our DCCs. We're looking to add water DCCs. We're the only local government, I think, in the province that doesn't have a water DCC available to us. Right now, water is a little over 40% growth-driven, and it's moving to well over 50% growth-driven. And right now, all of our residents are subsidizing that because we don't have a water DCC. So we're keenly aware of costs. We're looking, as an organization, to, you know, to manage them. We deferred over $400 million in capital in the last budget cycle. And we're looking now again to see, you know, do we have to build it all at once, or can some of these projects be delayed? But I thank you for the question, and it's certainly one of our core priorities.
Thank you very much. Councillor Long?
Yeah, thank you very much to both of you for the presentation. I just wanted to get some clarification. I mean, it's certainly in the 16-page presentation that you've sent us. It all looks very, very good. I'm sure we're going to be very happy to cooperate. But I just wanted to get Zoom in a bit. Like, on page 10 that I have, it says, "What's Proposed", talks right away about clarity on urban centers and frequent transit development areas. Several points there. Then on the next page, 11, those are some really good goals to go after. I don't think any argument there. But then I get a little confused on page 12 because really what it comes down to, the tire meeting the road for me, is, okay, we're developing in a reasonably fast fashion here in the township. We're growing rapidly. And this talks about the preferred areas of growth that the plan is calling for. And I think, Ms. McNeil, you mentioned something about blue, but I see so much blue on here, including the river. But maybe you could explain that a little bit more to us again? What areas affect us in terms of improving development in the future? And maybe we could zoom in on that. I'm sure afterwards, in the meeting, we're going to ask staff to help us to zoom in a bit more on this particular chart, too, so we can get a better sense of what may have changed a little bit since the last plan to this one, where you're going to be encouraging, you know, this transit-focused development. But could you explain a bit more the colors? I see the red, and I think you mentioned blue, and there's a dark blue spot on 200th Street there. But could you go over that a bit more for us?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to, through the chair, if I could. So we have a decades-long centers strategy in this region. So the areas in red are the urban centers, and they have been present for many decades. In Metro 2040 was the first time we really started to look at directing growth could transit-oriented locations. And we did that through a tool called a Frequent Transit Development Area. And those are the areas shown in purple on that map. So Carvolf is one of those. And this time around, what we're hearing from TransLink, and you'll hear it later on today, is that by 2050, we would expect that most of the frequent transit network, most of those lines will be at that service level already. So we were looking at really directing growth to higher, to certain locations. And so we are aligning another set of growth direction to those areas in teal-blue that are sitting over top of the yellow lines there. And these are called Major Transit Growth Corridors. And these are areas of potential. So it is a tool that the township of Langley can avail itself of if they would like to direct growth there. These are areas where future FTDAs or frequent transit development areas could occur. And so hopefully, your staff can walk through that as well. But I'm happy to spend lots of time on growth locations. But this is one of the few areas where we do have targets for growth. So in those red centers, for example, by the time we hit 2050, we're hoping to achieve 40% of housing growth and 50% of employment growth to those locations. The areas in purple, we also would like to direct a certain percentage of housing and employment growth there. So there's a strong alignment between objectives for targets and those locations showing on the map.
Okay. I guess you would agree, and it looks to me like we're well on the way. Township's already leading the charge here a little bit because we're already sort of doing that. So I guess this is, for us, maybe an emphasis on continuing to do what we're doing well and align ourselves, our efforts with yours. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Great. Thank you for coming today and appreciate the presentation. I had a couple of questions through the chair to you with regards to some of the goals that you have or policies going forward. And one was around industrial land. And I noticed that you've identified that as well in the highlights for the Township of Langley industrial land emphasis. And you mentioned in the presentation, stronger protection for industrial land. And I'm wondering, just some thoughts around what that looks like for stronger protection, but also maybe the increase of industrial land. In your document, you talk about maybe 500,000 jobs being created in Metro Vancouver. And obviously, many of those would probably need to have industrial land to take place. So maybe some comments around industrial land, protection and enhancement of industrial land, particularly as it relates to Metro and to the township of Langley?
Thank you for the question. And through the chair, we're very live to the challenges around the conversion of industrial land to other uses in the region. And that was one of the drivers for our board putting together an Industrial Lands Task Force and putting together a regional industrial land strategy. This was adopted last July. And what you'll see is a number of the priority actions that came out of that process are being embedded in the regional growth strategy. And so stronger protection means that there is, again, an optional tool, which is that members could identify trade-oriented lands with an overlay to support them not being subdivided into smaller parcels and to be utilized for trade-enabling purposes. It's not a requirement. It's a tool that's available to municipalities, so an option to really protect those goods-movement-oriented lands more strongly. But we also heard that we have some job lands, mostly mixed employment, that are near rapid transit stations, where you can understand a real pressure for housing. And so there are policies in the plan that within 200 meters of rapid transit stations, we would permit ground-level employment and then upper levels, other uses, whether that's around office or residential, with an emphasis on affordable rental.
Okay. Great. That's helpful. Thank you. And that ties into my next question. And that ties into my next question. You were talking about affordable, transit affordable housing, and that ties in, I guess, to this fifteen percent target of affordable housing. Do we have a sense of, when we look at the total amount of affordable housing that we're planning to see grow in Metro Vancouver, how much of that would be in the transit sort of affordable areas versus areas that might not be transit affordable?
That's a wonderful question through the chair. This is a real challenge, because of course, when you put in transit, it lifts land values, and it makes it very challenging to build affordable housing. And so what we're trying to do here is recognize those challenges, but aspirationally look for ways to ensure, whether it's through CACs or density bonusing or whatever it is, that we're trying to achieve some affordable housing, a lot of it, next to transit, because those are the people who are the biggest transit users. So it helps you optimize your transit investment. But right now, we also, in our work and research, have found that it might actually be on the shoulder of these transit-oriented locations where the land values permit lower-density affordable housing. And by lower density, I mean like a four- to six-story walk-up as opposed to a concrete tower. So there's lots of meat in the policies right now to help municipalities incentivize putting affordable rental near transit.
Right, great. I have one final question. In the document, you talk about target to protect fifty percent of the land in Metro Vancouver for nature. Any idea what what percent we're at currently today?
Yes, thank you through the chair. We're at forty percent currently, and so this is an ambitious target, because that includes our drinking watersheds, our provincial and regional parks, other ecological conservancy areas, and so on. And so this is a metric, that fifty percent, that is globally known as what ecosystems need to sustain themselves. But it is challenging to know at what scale, municipally, regionally, provincially, you know? And so we're setting an aspirational target to, again, really encourage all members to work together to put aside green space for nature. It helps us with our climate targets, it makes us more resilient, and as Jerry noted, we're really seeing a massive uptick in recreational use in the face of COVID and beyond.
Right, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson.
Yes, thank you very much, Your Worship, and thank you so much, Metro. Every time you come out, I feel so inspired to hear more about the strategizing and the longer-term vision, because ever since I first, even before I was elected, started to look into Metro, I realized it is such a brilliant model of how to run a regional area. It's made so much sense to me, and Jerry was talking about the fact that there's such rationality in stopping ourselves from spreading, and, you know, the collectivization of costs for infrastructure and all of these things. And so for me, when I hear these strategies, I think to myself, we're so fortunate to be in a region where we have collectivized what our common needs are, and that we have a layer of governance that helps us to do that. Because the other thing I know that local governments can struggle with is the resources necessary to do this kind of research and analysis ourselves. And so I know that Metro is very well-staffed, obviously, with Heather and others who are very expert in their fields, that do all sorts of research and help us to understand what our role is in all of this. I do actually have a couple of questions today. It's a bit of a segue from what Counselor Whitmarsh, I think, was asking, and the idea that goal one is create a compact urban area, and number three is to protect the environment. And I'm really interested in the overlap between these two. I think it's kind of a symbiosis that we have going, so to make sure that we get one, we really need the other, and to have these aspirational targets is great. But I just want to focus on the Township of Langley as a potential model of, you know, what can be done, for example, when you have a community, which is, you know, I know we're not all alike, we're not a cookie-cutter situation. So we have lots of land in the Township of Langley, but most of it cannot be developed, you know, for residential or commercial use, and so seventy-five percent of it, for example, is in the ALR. So when we have these numbers of fifty percent aspirationally of land base for nature and forty percent for tree canopy cover within the urban containment boundary, I'm wondering if there has been consideration for communities such as ourselves that can provide that as a contribution to the region, where others who have already developed and, you know, are not able to undevelop at this point, we have a lot of green area in the township relative to other communities. So I guess what I'm asking is the degree to which we can look at the Township of Langley situation and say, how can we, I'm going to call it leverage in some way, the fact that we are doing this? Because it is the case, I would argue, that we are competitively disadvantaged compared to other communities in terms of attack space and the number of residences and commercial that we could draw our income from to, in order to support a residence. So I'm wondering if that is taking all of this a step further to consider, you know, what would that look like in terms of any kind of formula or any kind of evaluation, like an actual economic valuation of what communities like ourselves contribute to that whole formula? Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship, I'll start. Maybe Jerry will have some words as well. Yeah, I think as Jerry noted in his opening remarks, each member really is contributing different pieces of the puzzle, right? And so we have the North Shore contributing drinking watersheds for us. We have six municipalities really contributing the bulk of our agricultural land and food security. We have others have with a richness of regional parks, et cetera, and so, and others who have industrial land, and others who are providing the bulk of social services and addressing homelessness. So everybody really is contributing different parts. So that's the first part of my answer. The second is, there's a really great interest in both quantifying lands in terms of what they provide for carbon sequestration, but also in terms of their ecological value and as natural assets. And that's work that we continue to undertake, and your point's well taken, we can come back with some of that information later, although you might hear some of that with the tree regulations toolkit as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I don't see any other questions, so I want to thank you again for your presentation. I know there's more work to be done. This is really an introduction to this this phase of the Metro 2050 Plan, so again, thank you. And I know you're not getting way too easy yet, because you're on D2, Tree Regulation Toolkit, and I'm not sure who's leading that one, so I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and if I may, my name is Marcin Pachinski. I'm the Division Manager for Electoral Area and Environment within Regional Planning, and I'll be giving the presentation on the Tree Regulations Toolkit. Bear with me. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, and thank you again, Your Worship and Council, for giving me this opportunity to present on Metro Vancouver's Tree Regulations Toolkit. This will be just a short overview of the toolkit structure. To begin, just as background and the rationale for the toolkit, we developed it because, as everyone knows, trees provide valuable ecosystem services, and ecosystem services are just simply the benefits that people obtain from nature. And in the case of trees, trees provide benefits related to climate action, such as flood control and carbon storage, and urban livability, such as shading and cooling. And in our region, as Ms. McNell and our CAO mentioned, we are a fast-growing region, and that population growth in the region puts additional pressures on our urban trees. In the region, our own studies suggest that the urban tree canopy cover is expected to fall from thirty-two percent to twenty-eight percent within the urban containment boundaries over the next twenty to thirty years, and that is largely due to development in the urban containment boundary. And one of the things we heard from member jurisdictions, including the Township of Langley, is that there was a lack of a one-stop shop for best practices that was really tailored for our region. And so that was the genesis of this, of creating this toolkit for municipalities to use as a resource, and it builds upon the suite of tools that Metro Vancouver has and continues to produce related to urban forests. So in a nutshell, the purpose of the toolkit is to serve as a resource for municipalities. There are lots of tools within the BC legislative context, and the toolkit will help each municipality go through a standardized process to choose the best tools to use to preserve the trees and tree canopies. And here, I'd also just like to acknowledge the work that the township has already been doing to manage and preserve its trees. I am aware that your tree protection bylaw was recently updated, and we had the pleasure of presenting to the Township of Langley Tree Protection Advisory Committee in March of this year, and there was strong interest in making use of the tool, so I hope that it has been useful. In terms of the toolkit development, one of the things that we started by doing was surveying municipal staff and consulting arborists, and this was simply to get an understanding, a local understanding, of what things were working well and what things were not working well. And the consultants also did a review of bylaws and literature that looked at other regions. So we looked at municipalities both within the region, as well as the tools that were being used in other jurisdictions within Canada and beyond. And if you look through the toolkit itself, you'll notice that there is an emphasis on tree bylaws, so it does cover higher-level plans as well as other tools. But the bulk of this initial version of the toolkit provides most detail on tree bylaws, and we will be updating the toolkit in the future to put additional emphasis on other tools as well. In terms of the structure of the toolkit, it goes from an overview of what is available for municipalities to use in terms of the types of regulations within the BC legislative context. It states what considerations each local community should consider for selecting the right tools. So for example, what level of administration and enforcement effort can be supported by the jurisdiction's population size and geographic area? Or another question could be, what level of regulation would align with community values? And then the toolkit goes on to describe each tool, so going from higher-level plans to tools that regulate land use and tools that primarily regulate trees. And here on this slide, you see the examples of what's available in terms of the tools within the BC legislative context. And again, to stress, this is not providing the municipality with one specific direction or an answer, it's providing the municipality with the right questions to have those discussions, and providing examples and options of what tools would work best to achieve different goals. So in conclusion, the toolkit is intended to support municipal efforts to incorporate tree protection measures into your plans and regulations, and with the overall regional goal of helping retain trees and growing the canopy. And it's available at metrovancouver.org. If you simply search trees, you, your staff, and members of the public will be able to access both toolkit as well as other resources that Metro Vancouver has related to urban forests. And with that, I'd like to thank again, Your Worship and Council, for this opportunity to provide you with this overview. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and yes, I think it was the last meeting, we council approved the update to the tree bylaw, so thank you very much. I don't see any questions, so I'll thank all of you from Metro Vancouver for attending, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to the Transport 2050 Plan, and TransLink will be here to present. I'll just take a look at my screen. I don't know who's here from TransLink. Ms. Howe, I see Ms. Howe.
Hi.
Hi, welcome here.
Hi, thank you. I hope you can all see my screen. I'm just going to maximize it and hope this works. Okay, are you seeing the full-screen version and not the notes, hopefully?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Eve Howe, I'm Manager of Policy Development at TransLink, and I'm here to provide a bit of an update on where things are at for the development of the regional transportation strategy, known as Transport 2050. The focus of my presentation is mostly on the process and how we've gotten to where we are now. We're just about to launch our third and final phase of engagement, and as part of that, we'll be hosting elected official workshops, where we'll dive more into the content. So today's workshop, or today's presentation is really focused a bit more on process of getting here. So to start off, what is Transport 2050? It provides a thirty-year blueprint for the regional transportation system in terms of projects, policies, and program. We really owe our current quality of life to some of the forward thinking of regional transportation strategies in the past. For example, back in nineteen ninety-three, we had the region adopt a Transport 2021, and if you go back to that, and you can see that many of the initiatives outlined in that strategy are currently form the basis of the transportation system today. This is a shared strategy, it's developed in partnership, although TransLink is leading it, we're developing it closely with Metro Vancouver, aligning it with Metro 2050, Climate 2050, and we're also working closely with municipal staff, including your staff, as well as provincial staff. So just a bit about how we've gotten to where we are now. We started the development of Transport 2050 back in twenty nineteen, pre-COVID, where we launched our largest-ever public engagement process. This is what we called Phase One. I'll go a bit into what we talked about with the public for each of these phases in the subsequent slides, but for now, I'll just kind of walk through the general arc of the timeline. So following Phase One was really focused on ideas and how people saw the future of transportation in this region. We then took those ideas and we started developing the strategy. We came back to the public in spring of this year with what we called Phase Two Engagement. We shared our draft goals for the strategy, as well as had some conversation about three particularly transformative actions. And then finally, as I noted, we'll be entering Phase Three Public Engagement in October of this year. So in Phase One, we talked to the public, we reached out really broadly, and we asked the public what their values were, what their concerns were, and what their priorities were. And this is what we heard from people from all over the region. We heard that people valued natural areas and parks, access to shops and amenities, and proximity to transit. We heard that their concerns were housing affordability, road congestion, and climate change. And when asked what people's top priorities were in terms of transportation and improving transportation in this region, we heard transit expansion and improvement was number one, transportation options that are timely and convenient was number two, and number three, a transport system that's cost-effective and efficient. We then took all of that feedback and we started developing the strategy, including five goals and then actions. In fact, right now, the current draft has over a hundred actions, but we focused in the spring, a second round of public engagement, where we brought out to the public three particularly transformative actions to collect public feedback on. I'll start with the goals. So we shared with the public the five draft goals of Transport 2050. These are that in the future, we will have transportation choices that are convenient, reliable, affordable, safe and comfortable, and carbon-free. We learned from this Phase Two Engagement in the spring that the goals are very much on track, supported by different demographics and subregions. We also asked the public about three transformative actions, and these, I'll walk through each of these in a bit. We asked the public about their opinions on people for streets that invite walking, biking, and rolling. This was what we heard about this, so the concept behind this is really, the reason it's significant is that, looking to the future, do we want to have more, create more spaces that prioritize walking, cycling, and rolling? And what we heard was strong support across demographic categories and across the region. We heard, however, we did also hear from the public that although in concept, it was well-supported, the implementation and the design need to be considered carefully, particularly in terms of ensuring accessibility, goods movement, and addressing parking concerns. The second transformative action that we asked the public about this spring was about the fast and frequent, fast and frequent rapid transit, that's a competitive choice for most long trips. So the way we talked to the public about this is we proposed the future of rapid transit in this region in the form of two potential hypothetical networks, Network A and Network B. Network A is more similar to what we have today, mostly above and below-street-level rapid transit, such as Skytrain. And Network B was more extensive, had more coverage, but was located on-street. And so there's trade-offs involved in these two options, which we described and which we collected public input on. We heard that people liked both networks. Network B sought slightly higher support across most demographic categories and subregional categories, however slightly, as both were well-supported. The third transformative action that we see over the next thirty years having a significant impact on transportation in this region is the arrival of automated vehicles. So we asked the public, we posed a number So we asked the public, we posed a number of suggestions on how best to manage the introduction of automation, automated vehicles into the region. We heard from the public that they generally agreed with the proposals to manage automated vehicles. However, this question compared to the other two, we saw a lot more neutral responses are really indicating that automation, vehicle automation is not well understood. There was also a lot more mix in terms of support for any strategies to manage automated vehicles involving fees, use of fees to manage the use of the introduction of these vehicles. And then so finally, we've taken all of the feedback from Phase Two. We've developed the full draft strategy, which we shared in an iteration, a couple of iterations with our mayor's council and are going again in a week with a final version that we will be seeking endorsement to bring to the public for engagement this fall. This will be launched on October 12th and it will be out for three weeks. We will have two versions of the draft strategy because it is an extensive document. We will have the option for the public to review a short six-page summary version, kind of an executive summary, and provide their overall impressions. And as well, for folks who are interested in diving more deeply into specific strategies and actions, we will be releasing a draft of the entire document and have more extensive survey, which allows for more deep dive responses. The public engagement will be supported by public webinars as well as three elected official workshops, which are currently being scheduled and which you should be receiving invites to shortly after, shortly. And I think that is it. Thank you very much and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation and to see if there's any questions from council. I don't see any. I know this document is, again, we just heard from Metro Vancouver regarding Metro 2050. This is, and it's good to see that Metro and TransLink are working together to ensure that transportation goes where growth is going to go. And that's, I think that's huge for our region. So really appreciate the work you're doing. And I know, I know we've been involved for a while in getting to this point. I look forward to more opportunities to engage and to have our say. So I encourage everyone, the public and also council, to take the opportunity to have their say in the future of transportation in our region. So I don't see any questions. So I just want to thank you for your presentation and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, so now we move to reports to council. E1 is Yorcson Community Park 2021 Phasing Update Report. An excellent report. There is a motion to receive. And certainly the motion includes a proposal of the plan for consideration during the future capital budget reviews. So the motion does encapsulate the budget process that's coming up. So Council Whitmarsh moves it. Is there a second? Or Council Arneson seconds? Thank you. Discussion, Council Davis.
Yes, thank you. E1. I just have a concern that we, in the report, it says that we're supposed to have two acres per thousand population. And then, but it also says excluding lineal greenways. Does this mean that it's, would the greenways, does that build it up to almost two acres? Or how much of the greenways are, do we know how much of the greenways are in there to make up our two acres per hundred? And what I'm concerned about is exhilarating the implication of the remaining phases. I'm just, I'm concerned about, well, that's what it's all about here in the report. But is it a law or do we have to maintain two acres per thousand? Or is that just what we want to do? And anyhow, just a couple of quick questions to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Backen. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Backen.
Thank you, worship. The parameter was set by council by either resolution or bylaw some time ago, previous councils. And it is something that council could vary. There was a fairly extensive process that resulted in that number going back a number of years. And it's just always been the number that we've operated from. My understanding of the second part then is are greenways then considered part of the parkland, the two acre parkland amount? And it's my understanding that it's not. The purpose of the language was actually to segment those and say that effectively there should be two acres of active parks. So the greenway calculations would be done separately. Then I think the third question then becomes now, in terms of accelerating the plan, what are the pros and cons of that? Well, the pros are that there would be, I guess, the ability for greater use by the residents in the area. The cons are simply going to be the cost. It's going to be the cost. And that's why it's being referred to the budget program so that we can actually evaluate that vis-à-vis other priorities. It certainly would be something we'd like to see happen. But again, given the competing priorities, it's too early to, I guess, comment if that's going to be something that can come about this budget process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
Yes, thank you. I know that myself, as perhaps rest of council have been watching this Assembly of Lands and how we've moved along over the years and it's done very, very well. My first question obviously is going to be as the years go by, the costs keep going up, the accelerated costs. That's, I guess, the case. And I guess it's, other than some of the others, this presentation we've had that affordable, buying property and developing recreational space, it's not, it's not, it's not really all that affordable. It gets more and more expensive as the years go by. Is that not correct? To Mr. Backen or Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, no, that is correct. I know from family experience, 40 acres in 1940 would cost about $700. I think Willbrook Shopping Mall might cost a little bit more than that now. Dollars do seem to come and go. And as a consequence, the township has worked hard on acquiring the Yorcson Parkland lands. I believe we have most of it. There might be the odd piece, but I think those are peripheral. The question really is construction costs in terms of building it. And we're certainly seeing those also under pressure. And I think that's what makes it a bit more of a challenge is the sooner we can acquire infrastructure and build it, generally speaking, the better, the better financially off we are. But that's always a matter of trade-offs, of course, and that's where it's difficult for council.
Yeah, you know, that was just a kind of a lead in and I appreciated that. Now it's kind of obvious, but it's important that the the public and the citizens, residents are aware of escalating costs unfortunately, even though it's for public use. Also our relationship, as you know, with the school district and their schools. My question is, one is going to the area every once in a while is I looked at your schematic diagram is parking and future parking, especially when they have tournaments and sport league games and other things. Is there enough park? And I know there's a school right beside that. That adds to challenges as well. If I may, is there enough parking in the area or you've done the best you can under the circumstances?
Backen.
Your worship, it would always be better to have more parking, but the existing cost of land, it's very difficult to justify that versus the utilization of the land for park purposes. So I guess the answer is we're doing the best we can with that. And the fact the school is next door actually certainly helps us. But there's always going to be parking pressures and that's going to put pressures on the roadways and neighboring communities as well.
Well, nothing succeeds like success, Mr. Backen and members of council. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Long.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just wanted to get a little clarification on that greenways too because I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't have more parks and I'm going to talk to that in a minute. But in Metro Vancouver perspective, I do believe that we call greenways parks. I guess it depends on the, on the type. Here it specifically says lineal greenways. But I mean, we have a number of greenways that are fairly extensive. But maybe Mr. Backen, through your worship, Mr. Backen could clarify, what is it that you know it's to be a greenway, which is then not part of the calculation versus, you know, like, I mean, if there's an area that's being well-used by the public and it's considered a greenway, why wouldn't it be part of our park formula?
Your worship, it comes down to the parameter set by the previous council or I think the previous councils, where the answer was that the thought of active versus playing fields and parks, which could also be passive with bigger green spaces, had a different function or purpose than the lineal greenways, which are most commonly known as trails. So there has to be a balance or blend. Then the question then I guess would come down to, well, could we modify the numbers such that we could have lower levels of active or passive parks depending upon our, on our greenways? And we certainly could. That's a decision of council. It's just not one that we've been operating under for some time.
No, and it certainly wouldn't be one that I'd like to promote, but I think it is something that we need to be aware of that. Let's stick to the goals that we've set here. I'm not suggesting that we move the goalposts at all. But the more greenways that we provide, I guess it's a bonus. It's a better, you know, it enhances. Because it is active, active park usage really, when you're talking about walking trails and so forth. But so just leave that there. I don't propose any changes. I just think we may be doing better than we think. But in the last paragraph, it hints upon, and it was brought up already, the, that normally the program doesn't put parks in until after the population is fully established. And it hints here that, well, considering what we just heard actually from, in our metro presentation and I've been aware of for the last several years, not just because of the pandemic, but there just seems to be far more usage of parks happening, which is a good thing for our citizens. And it certainly enhances the health and welfare of our, of our community. So, and I don't think today is the day to do it, your worship, unless you think it is. But maybe we should have some kind of information on what the borrowing would be now. I'm not the guy that wants to borrow a lot, but if we could accelerate the growth by borrowing and would that be able to put any interest now that we have, may have to pay on borrowing into the P D C C program? So can staff give us a bit of a roadmap on how we can actually accelerate it without it messing up the budget too much?
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, fortunately, we'll be starting a very high-level preliminary look at the budget come Wednesday. So we'll get a better sense of our opportunities and challenges. As to the issue of borrowing, yes, that's something council can always entertain, subject to some provincial limitations and guidelines, which I think we're within. We don't have to worry about those as much. It would simply be a matter of the, where the interest costs would fit in the budget. And the suggestion has been that the interest costs perhaps could be absorbed by some of the D C C programs. Now, there's varying rules depending upon the program itself. And Mr. Seffy may be the best person to remind myself anyways in terms of which of the D C C funds are eligible to pay interest and which ones are not. But Mr. Seffy, could the parks, I guess, construction or the parks, development D C C fund bear interest costs?
Thank you, Mr. Backen. Your worship, the question of inclusion of interest charges or carrying charges in a D C C program is one that is very much, I guess, reviewed by the inspector of municipalities on a case-by-case basis. So it doesn't relate so much as to whether it's a parkland acquisition or parkland development or in fact sewer construction or water construction, but rather the specifics of the project itself. And I guess in summary and in one word or in a few words, it depends on the circumstances. And it would have to be discussed and approved by the province on a case-by-case basis as to whether including interest charges are appropriate and as such approvable or not.
Okay, and the other thing to consider, so that's, that's good to know. But the other thing to consider, which has been mentioned, I think, is if the escalating costs to construct a park such as this, you know, might cancel out some of the interest because we know that the park is, this park needs to be developed eventually. So if we're going to save some money by doing it sooner, maybe that's a good way to look at it.
Okay, thank you very much. Don't see any other hands up. So I will call the question on E1. All those in favor and opposed, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. E2 is the South Campbell Heights Brookswood Aquifer Report, and this is a report to be received. It's the information and information report. Could I have a motion to receive? Council Arneson, a second. Council Kunst, any questions, discussion? Council Davis?
Yeah, thank you. Just when we go to the, we'll have a, staff anticipate an opportunity to provide formal input on the South Campbell Heights in the near future. And they talk about, well, groundwater reduction, reduced, enter properties along the south end, rely on wealth. Will, do, does staff feel like we'll be able to have a say or maybe help, will it be enough to, when we, when we have an opportunity to talk to them about the aquifer problem? I just wonder if, and will, do they think maybe Surrey's protection measures, will they be enough, you know, or will they just go ahead with it because of development of industrial lands? I don't know if that, that was maybe a comment, it's a tough question, but anyhow, okay, go ahead.
I think it's a good question. I think just to get a better understanding of the process that lies ahead. Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, your worship. The, I guess, process is currently with staff at the Metro Vancouver level that includes discussions with not just the city of Surrey staff, but planning staff across the region. Ultimately, once they have received all the input, once Metro Vancouver staff has received all the input from the staff level across the region, they will then present the regional planning committee of the Metro Vancouver Board with their findings. The regional planning committee will then be in a position to provide the Metro Vancouver Board with a recommendation. Once the Metro Vancouver Board has made a decision, if it in fact decides that they wish to grant readings, the appropriate, it requires the process of amending the bylaw, it will then be formally referred to member municipalities for comments. And ultimately, the comments from each municipality will be considered and then brought back to Metro Vancouver for adoption of the prerequisite bylaw. Now, this requires 50% plus one support. This is not the type of amendment that might have a higher threshold of two-thirds with a public hearing. So there's no public hearing involved and it's 50% simple majority plus one. That will then determine whether the matter can be adopted by the city of Surrey council or not. And as far as the actual technical issues are concerned, staff have been able to communicate with Metro Vancouver staff as well as the city of Surrey staff the concerns that have been expressed by council that staff share in terms of industrial development over a sensitive, sensitive aquifer. And I guess ultimately what will need to happen is if in fact this is supported at the board level, at the regional level and by the city of Surrey, appropriate measures will have to be implemented at the application by application level such that appropriate measures are implemented to ensure any impact in terms of land use and in fact certain land uses to be prohibited. And others that may be permitted will have to ensure that they have appropriate measures in place to protect the environment, including the aquifer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
I think those comments made by Mr. Seffy are important that this, as is this report. It's a very, very important subject for sort of lag surrounding communities around Campbell Heights. I mean, if you go down there, I mean, you don't have to be opposed to any sort of people using industrial lands. They're important. We all know that. But how big, how big is big? And they're just gigantic and there's a lot already built. And how much bigger do you want to build? And I drive by it every day, including today. And I can't believe how big a site they have and how many buildings they're putting up. And I guess my question to staff is, do, I mean, there's been an awful lot that's got to have to happen here. Do they have a plan, a scientific plan, we've talked about in the past, where they can feed the water into the aquifer through a storm water management plan and some scientific method, if I may, through the chair?
Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, if I understand the question correctly, they don't currently have a specific plan. What they have is a high-level plan that confirms that there's a need for land use uh, land use uh, as well as density to be to be carefully considered because of the fact that there is an underlying uh, uh, provincially protected and and recognized as being sensitive aquifer that uh, that that may be impacted negatively if if things are not considered appropriately. So it's a high level analysis that's been done by the City of Surrey that recommends further, more detailed analysis at the application by application stage.
Uh, Mr. Seffy, would you have, this goes back a while, and I don't know the specific detail, and again, not being an engineer. There was a a lake there, you know, that uh, we called it Stokes Pit. And I understood that that lake was impacted quite a bit by development or something. Do you know the details? Or do you know remember what specifically happened where that lake kind of almost disappeared?
Uh, Your Worship, through yourself, I'm afraid I don't. Uh, certainly, we can we can take a look and provide council with uh, with any information we can find out in terms of the 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 referenced pit or lake.
Sure, that's fine. Thank you very much. And it's an important report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Long?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to this uh, application to Metro Vancouver. So it it was sent in in two thousand and fifteen, so it's still underway. Why is it taking so long? Is it still in in the works then? Has it been?
Your Worship?
Yes.
Sorry, just just to confirm, the application has gone in. It was then retracted or or withdrawn or or requested to be put on hold and amendments have been made. So I I'm not uh, able to speak to the specifics of the amendments. But I know that there was some some retraction of of the area, as an example. Some areas on on one side of the creek were were removed from the application. And there were some uh, amendments made to the application by the applicant uh, based on feedback that was received in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen timeframe.
And then, thank you. And Mr. Seffy, you said that the uh, this is a simple majority vote. It's not a two third, because it's not a change to the certain designations, I guess. So have we done the math on that? Because it is a weighted vote, is it not? Um, and this 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 is something I think, Your Worship, that we should keep an eye on because but we don't have a whole lot of power with our two votes, and I don't know what our weighted additions are, but Surrey certainly does. I think it has its entire council almost on metro. Uh, and then it just needs to get Vancouver or Burnaby or somebody on board. So it it the likelihood of of fifty percent vote passing uh, on this is 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 probably pretty high. Um, so I don't know if if we want to start fighting, you know, on the hill on this one or not, but I guess it that something has to play out, but it's certainly something that I think we should keep an eye on at the metro level.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council Arneson?
Uh, thank you, Worship, and uh, thank you also to Mr. Seffy in particular for giving us some more of the details about uh, what could be anticipated with respect to the process going forward and and staff being given an opportunity to uh, address some of our concerns in this issue. I'd like to echo what Councilor Long has just said. I think we have to be vigilant despite the fact that there may be you know, the possibility and likelihood of this going forward. I did have a question to follow up from something that I know has happened in that area where the City of Surrey was required to create, for example, restrictive covenants so that none of the uses would allow uh, emissions that would require a a metro license or permit there. Is that something we could consider? Because airborne pollution in particular is a real challenge because of its dispersal over top of the aquifer. So I'm just assuming that we have a bit of a, an arsenal of things that we could bring forward in terms of at least recommendations for what the City of Surrey should allow or not on that site. Or those sites, I should say. Thank you.
You want, Mr. Seffy, do you have any comments on that? I don't know if you wanted to answer or you're just making comments?
Oh, sorry. No, I'm just wondering if that's something that that staff would perceive would be a thing that we we could do? Because there is a precedent for doing that.
Mr. Seffy? If you comment?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think really the best way that council may wish to ensure that uh, whether it's the aquifer on the ground or the air that we breathe above is is protected is uh, unfortunately likely out of our control as a municipality because it's it's happening in another municipality. So we do have a role to play as part of the region, as as you know, Your Worship, as was referenced earlier this afternoon. So it's really a question of whether the Metro Vancouver Board would like to impose conditions uh, on its endorsement of the application. And and if so, whether the City of Surrey Council wishes to uh, I guess comply with the wishes of a neighboring municipality in terms of what's being asked. So ultimately, yes, it could be done, but it's a question of other levels of government agreeing to such conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further hands up, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Move to E three. This is the Langley Building Bylaw Enforcement Policy. Uh, could I have a motion to adopt the policy? It's attached.
Move.
Council Whitmarsh, second by Councilor Kunst. Or Council Long. I'll give it to you this time. Second by Council Long. Uh, discussion, questions? I don't see any, so I will call the question.
Jack, shit, sorry.
Your hands, okay.
I know I can't I can't figure out how to get. I don't, is it reactions?
Oh, okay. So reactions in the bottom, there's, if you look at the reactions tab at the bottom, it says reactions. Sure, go ahead, Council Davis.
Okay, I'll go ahead anyhow.
Yeah.
I just a quick question. On this report for um, Langley Building Bylaw Enforcement Policy, um, on the last five point one six, may maybe I I just would like Mr. Backen to comment on I um, why it's here. I guess it's here, we get council also authorized the general manager, engineering, community development or their delegate to commence and proceed with legal proceedings in his or his discretion. So that, so I guess what this means is that um, we don't necessarily have, this doesn't, when something comes to us, it well, it doesn't have to come to council to be resolved. You like uh, when we uh, it comes to council, we haven't it takes two years and there's and we've knocked on the door thirty times. Does this mean that now it doesn't necessarily need to come to us? That the um, general manager can act and say, you know what? It there uh, we need to act on this. I'm gonna make a decision on my own, and this doesn't have to go to council. Is this is this generally what the, of what this um, this Langley Building Bylaw Enforcement Policy means is like, or I I just you just help me out a little bit, please?
Mr. Backen?
Thank you, Worship. Effectively, that's correct, and I think the question really is then why. Uh, we've seen that many land use violations are not forming health and safety issues. Um, they they tend to be more broad and general in nature. However, on the other hand, we're seeing some of the building bylaw infractions causing some more concerns, and we can all think of recent issues where there was alleged building permits or there were, whether there was or there wasn't, but there's been consequences from structures failing because of that. So this is an attempt to give the authority or the ability to act a bit more quickly, because as was stated, quite often the negotiation process can take a year or two. And quite frankly, some of the um, residents are aware of that. If we have the authority then to proceed expeditiously on some of these matters, we think ultimately it could result in a healthier and a safety environment for the people that are in or about those those structures.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will call the question on E three. All those in favor? And opposed? Council Woodward is opposed?
No, I'm not.
Oh, it's this little, okay, I I wasn't sure. So it carries unanimously. And move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F one is Official Community Plan Amendment and Rezoning Application Number one zero zero one nine two. And Development Permit Application Number one zero one two one two. This is Compass Cohousing, bylaw five seven three six and five seven three seven.
So moved, Your Worship?
Okay, uh, moved by Council Ferguson, second by Council Whitmarsh. Uh, any discussion? See, not a call to question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. And G one is the twenty twenty two Permissive Tax Exemptions, bylaw five seven three three. Could I have a motion, please? Council Whitmarsh and Secondar, Council Kunst, uh, discussion? Council Davis, did you have something to say? I saw your hand. Okay, no. I'm gonna call the question then. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to G two. This is Land Acquisition Loan Authorization, bylaw number two zero two one, and Alternative Approval Process, bylaw number five seven four two. Could I have a motion, please? Council Kunst and second by Council Davis. Any questions or discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Council Arneson opposed? Uh, everyone, uh, sorry, all in favor? Council Arneson opposed. Motion carries. Tell ya, seven weeks off on holiday, you have to get retrained. And Council, who was opposed? Sorry?
Long.
Long, and Council Long opposed. Yeah, thanks. If I missed, just let me know, because it's it's, you know, this the screen is interesting. Uh, we move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H one is Rezoning Application Number one zero zero five nine three. Development Permit Application Number one zero one one seven nine. This is Kuma Architecture, bylaw five seven three two. Could I have a motion, please? Council Ferguson, second by Council Whitmarsh. Discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? And that one carries unanimously. And we don't have any bylaws for final adoption. Move on to correspondence. Uh, J one is Temporary Use of Water Project Relief Request. Uh, there is a a request, and if council so chose, I believe uh, Mr. Backen has some comments on that, on on if he so chose to uh, provide some relief. Mr. Backen?
More to get back into practice, uh, Your Worship. Uh, I think generally we'd receive all the correspondence and go through each one individually.
Sure, that'd be fine. Okay, Secondar, moved by Council Ferguson, second by Council Arneson on receipt. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. We'll start with J one. Uh, Council Long, your hand is up.
See, my hand is up for uh, J two.
Okay, Council Woodward. Yeah, I'll wait. Council Woodward, were you there for?
I'll just wait if someone else makes a motion, Mr. M.
Okay. So, Mr. Backen, um, if you could uh, help me out here, how much is left in the council contingency? I know we discussed this, that may be a source of funding if we if council so wished to do this.
Thank you, Worship. The four of Ms. Rough answers the particular question. There was a previous question that was asked about whether or not this could be considered to be, I guess, assistance to a commercial venture. Because it's got the hospital foundation as being part of the limited partnership, it does meet the threshold test in terms of being something the council could entertain. Uh, as to the specific funding source, uh, Ms. Rough, what would be the amount in council contingency?
A hundred and forty seven thousand.
Uh, the answer was a hundred and forty seven thousand, Your Worship, so this would bring us down to about a hundred and thirty seven thousand, give or take.
Okay, so this is a um, temporary use of water. This is a temporary use of water, so this this wouldn't be going forward um, this in the future. It's just for now, for temporary, until they have the permanent hookups. And uh, as you mentioned, it is the hospital foundation, so I would make that motion that we take council contingency of ten thousand five hundred to offset these costs. Second by Council Whitmarsh and Council Long?
Okay, well, I was gonna speak to J two, but I'll speak to this one. And of course, it sounds like a a no, you know, a good idea, a wonderful idea, and who wouldn't want to help hospital foundation? But, you know, could staff give us a a brief uh, statement as to how many other real worthwhile um, projects are happening within the township that we would have to do the same thing to? Because I mean, it's always, if you do for one, you have to do for all. And and there is a, there is a cost, of course, to the to the taxpayer for the use of this water, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be either they pay it or we pay it, right?
Definitely. So, yeah, thank you for that. I'll ask staff to provide some some background. And and yeah, you are right. This is a a council decision. But there may be other circumstances council may wish to approve this or not approve it. Mr. Backen?
Thank you, Worship. It is um, an interesting question because historically we haven't had many such applications where we've actually had, if you will, relief being requested by um, uh, not for profits or charitable organizations um, in the area of either healthcare uh, or uh, or um, I would guess medical issues. Uh, in that regard, um, it's a bit unique. In terms of other similarities, we have seen things where we've had some, I guess, assisted housing that's from time to time come up, but we have a regulatory scheme that permits that to be considered by way of such as a waiver of some of the charges, C D C Cs or C A Cs that may go along with those. Um, so it it's a very good question in terms of the precedent that's being created. It'll be a fairly narrow one where we'd be effectively looking at entities that would be supporting uh, medical or 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 health and welfare type situations. So I don't I don't see this being particularly broad.
But just to follow up, Your Worship, uh, we did give, there has been C A C exemptions and D C Cs and a number of exemptions for this project already, right?
That is correct, Your Worship. It did qualify for a number of those, so it has got, it has received some assistance already.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Woodward? You're on mute, Council Woodward.
Of course I am. Um, yeah, I appreciate that solution, coming out of council contingency rather than waiving the fee per se. Um, the first thing that comes to mind, though, is a couple of other nonprofit projects that just didn't think to ask for it. Um, and and maybe potentially extending it to them as well. The first one that comes to mind is the hospice construction that's underway. Um, again, it's always great to get these requests, but of course other people might just pay it, not thinking that this is an option, and they don't, they don't think to ask. Of course, someone like Mr. Festbender is gonna know that he can ask to waive these fees. So I I don't know if there's, you know, won't uh, complicate this particular motion, but I'm a little uncomfortable, again, doing it for one and and not for some pretty obvious others. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, okay, this, I don't see any further discussion, so I'm going to call the question. Uh, so all those in favor? And opposed? Council Long and Council Davis opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Uh, J two, uh, I know someone wants to speak to J two. Council Long, was that you?
That's me, yeah. I just wanted to bring this to council's attention. This is Rail Safety Week. Uh, I'm just hopeful that staff can maybe do some things on a on the township webpage or on the township page of the newspapers or do something. I mean, we have so many rail crossings in the township. We are the 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 city of of trains in many ways, and rail safety is so important. So uh, I I didn't want to be specific, but can I make a motion that staff do everything it can to promote the Rail Safety Week with the resources that we have?
Certainly can make a motion. Is there a Secondar? It would be through our township page and, and Council Arneson. I I know uh, the um, uh, down at Fort Langley on the sidewalk approaching the railway crossing, there's now a permanent look before you cross or whatever. It says, I remember going there and spray painting a stencil uh, when that first started to come out, and it's nice to see that it's permanent with the new improvements have been done by that rail crossing. So certainly it's important that everyone is aware of rail safety, and and that was one thing that I know we we certainly were involved in some time ago. So with Council Davis, you have a question? Council Davis is a rail expert.
Well, no, I'm 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 not, but maybe uh, could we get a hold of this Mi- Mike? I'm like, uh, he's, he uh, is a director and he um, he he might have some resources that we can run through the school or like, it just, I don't know, any even a um, just anything like that, they may be able to help out with um, uh, for rail safety because it's, it like Council Long said, it runs right through the center of our of our town, and I see the lights are working now for rail safety that you can avoid the tracks if there's a train coming. But I don't know, just an idea, if we reach out to him, they might have, CP might have some funding that they might be able to help out with.
If you don't mind me saying, I know for sure they do. So we could contact, and Mike did come and speak to council several years ago. Um, but there is, there are resources on their website and available through their offices that that we could share, and there's some some videos that we could put on our website that would be really helpful.
Certainly, all staff will take that, take that information and and run with it. Thank you. Uh, all right, I'll call the question. No, we don't, don't need a question on that. It's been received, so.
No, no, I made, I made the votes.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Foster Family Month, any questions on that? Okay, don't see any. So move on to minutes of committees. Uh, we have the Heritage Advisor Committee on September one, Recreation, Culture and Parks Advisor Committee is September eighth. Could I have a motion uh, to receive the minutes? Council Kunst moves. Councilor? Secondary would be Councilor?
Long.
Long? Thank you. Any questions? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Now, the mayor report, mayor and council report. A little lengthy. It's been some time since we last met. And lots has been going on. I know council and I'm very busy. I I did sneak away on a little vacation, so there's a, I really appreciate members of council stepping up to attend some of these um, events on my behalf. And so I will begin, first of all, to say today's election day and ask everyone to get out and vote and exercise your right to vote. Uh, that's important for our democracy, and uh, I know I had the opportunity this morning, and I ran into Council Arneson at the voting booth, so we tried to, you know, wrestle each other for votes, but no, we had a good, good chat. It was nice to see you, see you at the at the booth, at the voting booth. So it's good to be back, and it's been a nice summer. It's been hot, we certainly experienced some heat. I know that was back in June when we were meeting, and then we went on, and it's been very dry, but certainly happy to see the rains that we've had just recently. Council attended several events over the break, starting with the Eighth Annual Korean War Veterans Day Ceremony on July the 27th. Councillor Ferguson attended the ceremony to commemorate the 68th anniversary of the Korean War armistice in remembrance of the Canadian fallen buried in Busan, Korea, and to honor the Canadians that served. Acting Mayor Richter attended and spoke to the New Directions English Language School Graduation Ceremony on August 10, and congratulations to all of the grads. On August the 18th, Acting Mayor Richter joined the Aldergrove Rotary 50-50 Draw Celebration at the Derrick Double A Arboretum. Proceeds from this year's draw will help the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation, the Langley Hospice Society, the Starfish Backpack Program, Langley Meals on Wheels, Langley's Food Bank, and the Gateway of Hope. Congratulations to Lillian and Tony Fuller, who won the 50-50. I'd like to thank everyone who bought tickets to support our community. And this year, the Rotary sold out, so it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar prize for the winner. So congratulations to everyone who supported all these worthwhile causes in our community. Acting Mayor Richter and councils Arneson and Woodward attended the seniors rental housing groundbreaking ceremony on August the 24th. This exciting project will include 30% affordable units for seniors and will be a wonderful addition to our community. The Tournament of Hope took place on August the 25th at Redwoods Golf Course, and Acting Mayor Richter spoke at the event. The tournament raises important funds for the Gateway of Hope, an outstanding organization and asset to our community. I'd like to thank everyone who made the event such a success. On August the 26th, Acting Mayor Richter participated in a meeting organized by Fraser Health regarding updates on their response to COVID-19 pandemic, and to discuss areas where we can work collectively to respond to the crisis. The 109th Annual Aldergrove Fair Days took place on August the 28th and 29. Councils Arneson and Long attended the drive-through and drive-up event at McKinnis Farms. A wonderful time was had by all. On August 31st, I participated in Metro Vancouver's Meet Your Local Leader event at the P&amp;E. It was wonderful to be able to talk to members of the public about their opinions on regional issues and discuss Metro Vancouver's many vital services and their important projects and initiatives. And certainly it was good to see all the departments in Metro out, and I think it was well-attended, lots of, lots of events for children to be, and adults to get involved in. And I lost the beanbag toss that was poo and pee into the toilet seats that was to help us, you know, put the right stuff in the right, Ferguson, you'd like this, but I lost to, I lost to the general manager, Paul Henderson. I think he'd been practicing, so I'm sure he no longer works there, but no, we had a good time. And, you know, but, you know, it's to teach people, you know, the residents, what Metro Vancouver does, and how important it is that we are careful how we use the different resources. Now, I sure got off on that one. Okay, also, on August 31st, councils Ferguson, Kuntz, Whitmarsh and Woodward attended an event for International Overdose Awareness Day, organized by the Langley Community Action Team. Memorial displays were erected at the Derrick Double A Arboretum and the Fort Langley Community Hall, and a walk to remember took place at the Arboretum to Douglas Park in Langley City. The main event at Douglas Park featured indigenous drumming, naloxone training, a candlelight vigil, a moment of silence, and speeches from dignitaries and a member of Mums Stop the Harm member who talked about her experience with overdose. As we all know, we have two pandemics in this province, and the overdose, certainly pandemic is, not pandemics, two provincial emergencies with the overdose being, the crisis being one of them, and we can't forget the work that needs to be done and how we can assist those who need. On September 2nd, Acting Mayor Richter and councils Ferguson and Whitmarsh attended the Tennis Centre grand opening. This new facility wouldn't have been possible without the Tennis Centre's partnership. We thank them for bringing a world-class facility to our residents. And I heard that councillor Ferguson arrived in his tennis whites and his tennis shoes, but nobody would take him on. Is that right? Oh, good, okay, you did have a match. Excellent. You're just too good for everybody. The Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival took place on September 4th. Acting Mayor Richter spoke on behalf of the township, and councillor Katrina Arneson led the Mardi Gras Strolling Parade from the Fort Langley Village Farmers Market to the Fort Langley Community Hall. We're also so thankful to the Jazz and Arts Festival was able to return this year. I'd like to thank everyone who worked so hard to bring the festival back to our community in its fourth year. On September the 9th, the B.C. Farm Museum Appreciation Barbecue took place in Fort Langley. Councillor Arneson, Kuntz, Richter and I attended to show our appreciation for all the volunteers and supporters of the B.C. Farm Museum. And I know all the food was donated, and I want to thank the donors, and it was a great hamburger, which I enjoyed having lunch with councillor Richter. Also, on September 9th, councillor Ferguson attended the Vancouver Fraser Port Authority Board of Directors and Mayor's Meeting to receive an update on the port and their environmental collaboration and discuss the impact of the Roberts Bank Terminal 2 project, particularly on communities with at-grade crossings. During the UBCM Conference, I along with staff and MLAs Dykeman and Mercy had the opportunity to meet with Premier John Horgan and Ministers Eby, Fleming and Ma to discuss important issues in the township. I appreciate the time they took out of their busy schedules to listen and discuss our concerns, and some of those concerns we discussed are the use of DCCs for infrastructure projects such as the 232 interchange. We also discussed improving Glover Road or Highway 10, looking at 16th Avenue and other, and Highway 1, also the widening of Highway 1, and some of the concerns and issues that are there. So it's always good to have those meetings, and they're only, they're short 15-minute meetings, but we are able to get our message across. On September the 16th, I attended the B.C. Liberal Caucus UBCM Roundtable on Growing the Economy Post-Pandemic. Discussion centered around the need for housing, childcare and access to education and skills training, and the fact that British communities need to be provided with the tools they need to re-enter the workforce. There's upcoming event, the Third Annual Mayor's Charitable Gala is this Saturday on September the 25th, and is being hosted by the Firefighters Charitable Society, and appreciate all the work that they've been doing in the committee and all the volunteers that'll be there, and money raised will be going to, primarily will be going to the new Langley Hospice and also to the Langley Firefighters Charitable Society. Seemed that when we got back in the swing of things in the beginning of September, a raft of meetings, TransLink Metro, MFA, the municipal finance authority, had the semi-annual meeting in conjunction with UBCM, and Board of Trustees meeting, certainly, National Zero Waste Council had their meeting, it's a quarterly meeting. Lots going on in our region and a lot of work by a lot of member municipalities. Councillor Arneson attended the Metro Climate Action and the Langley Local Immigrant Partnership Committee, those are two committees, not one. Councillor Ferguson, Metro Vancouver Liquid Waste, and councillor Richter attended the Metro Regional Parks Committee Tour, a board meeting on regional parks. So I'd like to thank members of council for all their participation, and if there's anything to add from members of council, now is the time. I think everybody wants to get home and look at the results of the election. So thank you for that. Certainly a busy time, and we're, after a really nice break, we're all back at work, rolling up our sleeves and doing what we can for our communities. So thank you. Councillor Ferguson, I knew you'd have something to say.
First of all, you know, the Fullers winning, Mr. Tony and Lillian Fuller winning that 50-50 draw, they're two of the nicest people you could ever meet in the township, and they do a ton of volunteer. Isn't it nice for a couple like that to win the money? Okay, the second thing is another announce, public announcement. When you're washing your clothes, use cold water. You know why? Protects the wildlife and the fish and the whales, so, and also you save money, because there's a lot of fibers, I guess they're kind of plastic fiber that gets in with hot water. So there's a technical reason, but the message is, and it's gonna be in the news, in the news are those little advertising things they do with cartoons, wash with cold water. That's my announcement for today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to me, just to clarify that, it's only synthetics that you're gonna wash in cold water. You have to wash your sheets in hot water.
Yeah, synthetics, yeah. It's the, it's the microplastics, microfibers, yeah, that get in. But if you have cotton sheets, cotton sheets, then, all right, well, we're not gonna get on a laundry debate here, I think, I think we can take that offline and have a discussion on laundry. It's been a long time since we've met. All right, we're gonna go to other business, and we have councillor Arneson with notice of motion, so councillor Arneson, we'll put your mic on. It's on, so go ahead. Oh, it's off. It's on, it's on. Okay, you're on.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, there we go. So I won't read the whole motion out, but I will just refer to part of the motion, which I think is the most salient point. So in the motion, it refers to, whereas the Salmon River uplands are specifically addressed in the rural plan at paragraph 571, regarding the need for a more detailed plan to be prepared to set out policies for future growth, subdivision and agriculture in the area. And then the final paragraph is, therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to provide a focused review of the current plan with respect to residential subdivision development in the Salmon River uplands, and report back to council on recommended amendments and enhancements to the rural area plan in order to address these underdeveloped goals, so as to provide an interim framework in which to evaluate residential development proposals within the area. I so move.
Is there a secander? I don't see a secander, so. Oh, councillor Long. Councillor Long is seconded. Yeah, and seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, councillor, or councillor Arneson, I'll let you speak to it. We'll put your mic back on.
Oh, thank you.
I think I'm fighting with Wendy here. There we go.
There we go. Yeah, I was going to allude to the fact if and when somebody seconded the motion. I brought the motion forward due to recent discussions regarding expanding suburban development and potential subdivision or larger acreages within the Salmon River uplands. I believe that this is a critical time and opportunity for council to direct staff to undertake this review and provide recommendations regarding planning criteria for this rural area. I want to now just reinforce the fact that the rural plan is 30 years old approximately now, and it is important to update this component of the plan, and just as we have recently revamped OCPs, neighborhood plans such as in Brookswood and Fernridge, most particularly, as the document itself specifically referenced the need for the township to create more detailed planning for this area. So these are some of the reasons why I think we should be doing this now. The Sustainability Charter that should be governing our actions was adopted in 2008, and it requires that we call upon ourselves to first respect our rural character and heritage while conserving and enhancing our environment by provoking stewardship. In 2019, sorry, this mask makes things difficult, bear with me. In 2019, council unanimously endorsed the Climate Act and Strategy with a vision in which we are actively developing healthy and inclusive communities in which residents are able to walk, bike or seek alternative transportation. Using this template, we are required to proactively utilize a climate lens to reduce our carbon pollution footprint and to adopt focused mitigation and adaptation strategies. It is my opinion, and a number of residents in the area also believe that the Salmon River uplands planning guidelines need to be updated to reflect this new reality. Also, we have, as council is aware, the T-PAC Task Force, which is currently working with Diamond Head Consulting. So we're working to develop a community forest management strategy designed to expand and protect our existing tree canopy resources. So it was helpful to have Metro here today to talk about what the aspirational goals are in terms of maintaining and protecting our tree canopy. Their reference only was with respect to the urban containment boundary, however, our land base contains very large volumes of significant clusters of trees and forests, and many of them are found in the rural area. And just to refresh our memory from our meeting in July, there was a application put forward which would effectively remove approximately 5,000 trees in a single-family residential subdivision. So in my view, this type of application should be reviewed with respect to what the implications would be with respect to our tree canopy expectations. The other thing is Metro 2050. We should be preventing urban sprawl and focusing on good transit-oriented locations to support the development of complete communities with a range of housing, jobs and amenities. And our strategy for subdivision and development in rural areas has to consider the negative implications of continuing to encourage single occupancy vehicle traffic in the absence of transit to these areas, as well as the lack of any neighborhood services and other amenities. You know, we should be moving away from this model, because in fact, it is urban sprawl. And then another point is that historically, approximately, staff has done some really great work over the summer, which I requested. It's basically the fact that the recent application that we got is potentially one of many that could be considered. So there are a total of 177 existing lots with subdivision potential that are not in the ALR in the Salmon River uplands, and a total of 723 potential additional lots not in the ALR, based on current zoning provisions. However, as Mr. Safi pointed out correctly, that these actually could not be necessarily the lowest numbers, because in fact, anybody can come to us and ask us for a subdivision with, you know, whatever kind of numbers and zoning that they wish to have adopted in the area. And finally, it is the case that hundreds of acres, sorry, pardon me, hectares, she'll say I'm old, we talked about acres, 680 as of 1999, were already excluded from the ALR designation in the Salmon River uplands, and that was because they wanted to reduce the potential conflicts between agricultural and residential uses. So this planning principle, if we start to allow the increase of incremental increase of many more houses, is just going to exacerbate whatever conflicts we currently have. So in light of all of the above, I hope that council would endorse and request that staff begin this review process so that the Salmon River uplands planning can be reviewed as envisioned by the 1993 drafters of the original plan.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I don't have a real problem with the review and sending it to staff, but I'd like to move that we put this to the next meeting or a meeting of a full council. There's a council member missing today, and I think this is a very important, this is a very important document, and I think that, can I move that, or is that something I do?
Certainly, that can. Yeah, just let me complete, councillor Long. There are other hands up, so councillor Davis, unless those hands drop off immediately, I'll let them go through their questions and then, or comments, and then I'll come back to you, and you could refer to the next meeting or even the CPC if you want to have further discussion. Councillor Long.
Yeah, thank, well, this is, the reason I seconded it is, this is, this has got all kinds of angles to this, so let's start off with the first one. There is currently an application that staff recommended to council to approve, and I, you know, and I should, I should know exactly what the status is, but I think it'd be good for us all to hear. What is the status of that, and how does this motion potentially affect that? Let me start with that, and I have another couple of questions beyond that, Your Worship.
Mr. Safi?
Staff, tell me, I thought we were supposed to have a public hearing. It hasn't gone to first and second. I can't remember where we are.
It's, it hasn't passed first and second, so Mr. Safi, maybe you can just remind us on the status of the new vote application.
Thank you, Your Worship. The direction from council to staff was to provide council with a presentation. Staff is currently working on finalizing that presentation for ideally the next council meeting, but it could be as late as the subsequent one. So one of the, one of the two council meetings in October is what staff is hoping to be able to present to council as directed.
That's the presentation on the, on the application.
That's correct, in the context, I guess, of the area.
So I wonder what this, well, maybe staff can comment, Your Worship, what would passing this motion do, number one, but number two, let's keep in mind, what kind of review are we talking about? Staff are just gonna go through the document and come back with a report saying, well, these are the things that could be looked at, could not be, I mean, that's kind of what it says. Or is this something that's gonna require resources? Is it gonna take a long time? And I guess I'm really interested to know if staff feel that this is a good idea. Can this be done concurrently with this application? And in all fairness, the application that was recommended by staff to council, and now we're getting a presentation in October, was following the rules that were in place. So we're really in a bit, in my opinion, we're in a bit of a spot here. So can staff comment on what length of time this would be envisioned for this review to do, and how would it affect that application?
Mr. Safi?
Your Worship, the way that maybe correctly, maybe incorrectly, maybe somewhat correctly, staff understands the motion that's being considered by council at this point to be, would be to provide council with an outline of the historic zoning provisions within the defined area, and not necessarily going beyond that. within the defined area and not necessarily going beyond that. And then, I guess, awaiting subsequent direction from council, if any, as to to what might be what might be desired by council. And and just add to to that, your worship, typically, and and I use the word advisedly, changes in direction, historic directions or or requests for additional information have not been have not been impacting applications that are in stream. So what I'm saying by that is, I guess, to to put it in a bit more simplistic terms, applications that are currently in the process and being being reviewed and the aforementioned new file application is just one would be, I guess, considered by staff unless otherwise directed by council to to not be subject to any potential amendments to the, I guess, the landscape, if you will. If if council was to direct staff to bring forward a, say, just for discussion purposes, enabled plan for the area, staff would, again, unless otherwise directed by council, staff would would process applications in stream in the in the, I guess, the routine way and and apply the requirements or the provisions of a new plan to future applications.
So hearing that, your worship, would this be something that staff would say could happen concurrent with the presentation we're supposed to get? Could add to that presentation even? If Mr. Seffy started off by saying that that he felt that this would be a presentation of the history background and rationale perhaps of the existing plan, that seems to me could likely be a part of the presentation that they're planning to bring forward on this other application.
So Mrs. Seffy, this if this, well, Councillor Davis has a potential motion coming, but this is just referred to that presentation with that with that answer what Councillor Long is is getting at.
Your worship, thank you for the opportunity to to have some clarification as to what council may be wishing to direct staff to do. Again, I look for I look to council to direct staff or to advise staff if if interpretation is not correct or accurate. This could be either a two-step process or a one-step process. As I said earlier, the first step being to present council with the existing landscape, if you will, what the current rules and regulations are, where the roots of those regulations go and and what does that mean? Councillor Arnison referenced the approximately eight hundred lots that could, in theory, be created based on the existing zoning provisions. Those zoning bylaw provisions go back decades. So if council wished to amend the zoning bylaw as an example, that would have significant implications. So what I was saying earlier, in the short term, certainly we can provide council with what the existing landscape, what the existing regulatory framework looks like, but if council was to ask staff to do the second part, which is to report back on recommended amendments and enhancements, then I think that would take a bit more analysis and investigation and and would take more time.
So, your worship, if you don't mind, then the wording in the motion is problematic because it does call for that. But I would think that if we referred this to the presentation that staff are planning, it might address Councillor Davis's concern too, because by deferring it to that presentation, there'd be a chance for all of council to be to be present as well. So maybe you could keep that in in mind, your worship, that 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 might be where I'd like to go with it is to refer it to to the presentation that that staff are already planning for the step one. And I don't know if we can pull a step one and step two out of this motion.
Okay. Okay, thanks. We'll we'll move through the list and then I'll go back to Councillor Davis on that. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I think Councillor Long probably summarized quite accurately the things that I was thinking of. I had felt that we had a presentation coming up with more information still to come on the current application. I think that would be helpful to get that information from staff. And so I think it is possible here to have this this motion from Councillor Arnison referred to that presentation. Council staff can consider it as part of that, and I think it would also deal with the the issue of having one of our councillors not present today, as Councillor Davis has suggested. So I would support that. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Ferguson?
Oh, you know, it's it's a very interesting motion. It involves an awful lot of thought and and as I think councillor but manager Safi was being kind of kind when he said it took a little bit, I think it takes a lot of staff time. And I think we also have to look at our priorities for this term. I I would think that this would be a good place for council to roll up their sleeves and determine if this is something we want to do. It's important, I understand that. But it implies not just the zoning of the Salmon River uplands, but agricultural land uses, including the the Right to Farm Act and and what people can or cannot do on agricultural land, which the Township of Langley has limited control over. So I mean, I know that Councillor Davis has talked about referring it to a full council. I think maybe a full council of the council policy or process committee might be the best thing to roll up. We could get the presentation from staff, we can get asked questions, and we can determine as a council how that that schedule and syllabus would look like. It's a very, very complex Salmon River uplands, as we all know, that those applications and the zoning bylaw goes back, as Mr. Safi says, thirty years. So that would be, and I'm not sure what Councillor Davis would would think, but I would think referring this to a council, a process committee would make the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arnison?
Okay, I'm going to use now my second opportunity. I just want to ensure that we're all on the same page in terms of looking at this and not conflating this with the recent application that we had. So now when council is weighing in, as you're right, there are many things that are now being introduced into this, such as historical zoning, that I don't think would necessarily have any relevance to this. This is not a recommendation to go into that depth of looking at historically how all these, you know, zoning questions were made. You know, of course, to understand why they came about is helpful. This is more of a motion to look at an overlay that responds to the fact that for thirty years, this plan has needed some kind of updating. So it may not be, in some people's estimation, an immediate emergency that we need to do this, but what I would suggest is basically all of the different planning mechanisms that we've had, similar to Brookswood Fernridge, where everybody was throwing up their hands and saying, oh, nineteen seventy-nine, that's so long ago. Well, nineteen ninety-three was a long time ago too, relative to all of the different policies that we have in play now. And the more that I consider this, the more I realize when would be a good time to do this? It may be some people would prefer to put it to a CPC meeting. I don't find that to be particularly helpful, nor do I find it helpful, honestly, to roll it into some kind of report that's coming along with the other proposal. These two are not the same. This is a planning exercise, which I understand to be something that, yes, we have to support it as a council and give direction, but I don't see this as necessarily married to this other project. All I can say is I know, I don't have a crystal ball, but we're going to get more of these applications. And I think it is actually irresponsible for us not to do updated planning for the area. So I don't understand why we would want to drag our feet on this, but if, you know, council feels they want to put it to a CPC, that's fine. My personal preference is to have the council member who's not here today because of the Elections Act to be able to come and, if she's available at that point, to to give her opinion. Let's have a full complement of council. I would much prefer that than to roll this into the prior report that was being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Yeah, well, I I guess I was going to try and make a modification to the last paragraph so that we could break it up, but.
We can go back to this first, we could first find out if this is going to be deferred to the next meeting. So if it's deferred, we just defer the whole thing and then can make any. I think we've had a good good discussion, got some clarification, but I would think that would be the next step if if.
So that would be defer to the next meeting, period, and never mind whether it's a full council or not, because, you know.
Yeah, they can always defer it again, so that's we have that if we so chose. Councillor Whitmarsh, do you have anything to add to this and maybe I'll go back to Councillor Davis then?
I would say that. My mic's on and, yeah.
Yeah, it's on.
I would just say that that I think that it sounds like other members of council are treating this as being important. It's just that we also have a discussion that is involving a pretty significant application that involves the same area. And so we have a report coming on this area about that application. I'm not suggesting the same thing, but they are related. They are related because this happens to be a review of an area in which this application is centered. So they are related, so I think getting that information is helpful. I think this this motion from Councillor Arnison is a is a helpful motion and it certainly most members of council have expressed support for moving forward on it and wanting to make sure we have everyone speaking to it. So I don't think we've at all suggested it's not important, and I think we should move ahead in the plan that we have.
Okay, Councillor Davis, do you wish to make that referral to the next meeting and then hopefully we have a full council here?
Yeah, I, yes, I would. I I listened to what everybody said and it 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 kind of, the motion kind of is warped out of what we're working on. So but I I think just even just getting to the next meeting, having a full council, I don't want to jinx anybody's career opportunities here, but if, but let's let's a full, let's take it to a full council. Yeah, I so I move.
You move. Is there a seconder? Councillor Arnison seconds it. All right, I'll call the question on on the, I guess, defer, that's what it is. All those in favor, opposed and carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item of business is O two, and it's what we discussed in our council process committee regarding the amendment to the procedural bylaw to allow for these hybrid-type meetings after the legislation changes. So I think we all had that good discussion. So Councillor Ferguson moves the the bylaw for second and third reading, and this is bylaw number five seven four four. Amendment number five seven four four. And seconded by Councillor Coontz. Any further, any discussion on that? See, now I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed and carries. Is there any other business? Any other? Okay, I'm now going to ask.
Do another delegation.
Okay, yeah, we dealt with a delegation, I think it was dealt with earlier, so. All right, so is there any on table for closed? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to resolve into special closed. Councillor Arnison, seconded by and seconded by Councillor Davis. Anything else to add? All those in favor, opposed, carries. Now a motion to terminate.
Termination.
So Davis, seconded by Councillor Whitmarsh. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you very much for attending and we again, get out and vote, and I know we'll all be anxiously watching the results tonight because we're all on this council politicals, so it should be fun. It's always fun to watch somebody else's election, I think. All right, we'll we convene in about five minutes, five minutes on the same same.
Seven minutes?